Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for forty and forty-two Central Street, Fayetteville Hall. Special permit adaptive reuse of historic buildings. This public hearing is continued from July twenty-second, August fifth, and August twenty-sixth. Let's the town planner to give us the update.
Just get my bearings here. Since the last planning board meeting, that was August twenty-sixth, we had an extension request to extend the planning board's action or decision to September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. The extension was granted. In the interim, we provided a set of approval conditions to Town Council and then ultimately a draft decision for both the major site plan and the adaptive reuse of historic buildings permits to Town Council and to the applicant and the engineer. We received Town Council comments back this morning. We also received some comments from William Pizzoni, the attorney representing Mr. Deli Piscoli. That information was provided to the planning board. What I passed out at the beginning of the meeting are draft decisions with handwritten notes on them, which represent comments from Attorney Pizzoni and also Town Council Aldo Cipriano, in anticipation that we would go through anything that still needs to be ironed out and mark it up here tonight so that I could finalize the drafts and depending on if the planning board closes and votes, we could get these expedited. They'd be ready to go if everything's ironed out. The decisions also have some waivers that I can't recall if they were voted and granted on. They may have been. We also received via email some comments from Michael Wyshon, who is with the Southborough Historical Society. And if you choose, I can read that into the record and you can let me know when, if you want it right away. And that's about it.
Why don't we move to the presentation on the updates from our last meeting, John? Is that okay? So, John, could you introduce yourself and your team, and then we'll turn it over to Peter?
Sounds like it. Okay. I'm John Deli Piscoli, the proponent of First Colony Development and on the Fayetteville Hall renovation plan. And with me tonight is Peter Bemis, the site engineering firm, handling, you know, the various points of the site plan and special permit.
Thank you. You're on, Peter. Good evening.
Good evening, Peter Bemis, engineering and design consultant. So, the plans are revised through nine-three. What I've done is highlighted some of the items that we discussed at the last meeting and then to bring attention to the points that were revised on the plan. So, the trees, as we had stated at the last meeting, are brought along, the frontage staggering so that we would be able to address the concerns that the board had relative to the relationship of the parking lot to Central Street. In yellow, I've identified the existing trees that are retained. These are fairly large trees on the order of thirty-six to forty-two inches, depending on what location you're at. And then along the perimeter, these are the shrubs that Mr. Piscoli prefers to plant, keeping them in keeping with the plant communities that were being put in at historic facilities at this time period. Those also occur along the building, and then this is a traditional boxwood hedge that's through here. The fountain is located at this position. We had identified that at the previous meeting. We had discussed at the last meeting that the encroaching asphalt that's beyond the pavement limits that are needed for the travelway would be removed. That note is on the plan. On the next sheet, we identified the flagpole light. So, the flagpole light is an uplit luminaire for the flag, and we identified it by its specification down here in the note. And then the water service was also on the plan but not clearly identified, so we put a note saying water service location. We also put a note on the plan relative to the location of the existing hydrant. It's about one hundred feet from this point going to the south on Central Street. That light fixture is also identified here in the photometric. Then for the architectural plans, we introduced the same sheets that you had before except for A four and A five. And on those sheets, we identified plan materials for the facade. So, we've got the flagpole located here with a note referring you back to the site plan for the luminaire for that light fixture for the flagpole. And then note EF two, which pertained to the waterboard, if you will. The lower board on the building would be an AZAC material, but the other trim boards along the windows would be pine. And the shingles, the previous plan that you had had from the architect had an asphalt shingle, and this is the slate line product that Mr. Piscoli had identified to you. Because A four and A five are both elevation plans, those notes transfer from both sheets. So, you've got new A four, A five plans with those two notes on them.
And the shutters, Peter.
Excuse me, thank you. And the shutters. That's also captured in that note. So, the shutters were added along the lower elevation where they were in the historic plan, and then the front. They're also repeating on either side. And if we go to A five, the shutters are at the back corner of the building as well. Fussin O'Neil gave us back a peer review letter, and the only item still on the letter was for the board to consider the tree placement along the street satisfying the requirements. And then the parking note. We identified both features because we don't feel as though our parking goes up to the threshold that was recommended, but if we put a hundred percent of this building in at retail, we need thirty parking spaces. If we take it out as its components that we had had, we're down to fifteen. We've got thirty-two, so we cover both. So, we just put both on the plan so that they were memorialized in the site plan. I'd also bring up to your attention one more thing, which was the sign. We put on a kind of a historic sign detail here. And the hours of operation were listed on the plan. They've been on the plan now for some time. I know that's part of the decision that you'll need to make, looking for those hours to be filled in, but they're on the plan. Thank you.
Yes, just to reiterate, I failed to mention that Fussin O'Neil did provide their fourth set of review comments, considered their final review. And as Peter indicated, predominantly they were just reiterating the waivers that are required, barring any of the landscaping concerns.
That's the only other letter we received between, since the last public hearing?
Yes, we received a letter from Town Council regarding the review of the decisions. We received an email from Mr. Pizzoni, Attorney Pizzoni, regarding his comments on the decisions.
On the conditions.
On the conditions, yes. So, I'm going to read into the record an email from Michael Wyshon, who is, I believe he's president of the Historic Society. And this email was dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, received at about 5:52 PM to Mr. Donald Morris and copying me, this is the town planner, John Deli Piscoli, Joe Hubley of the Historic Commission and the Historical Society is another recipient. And the letter says, "Dear Don, it was with a bit of dismay that I watched your August twenty-sixth meeting where the discussion got bogged down for over an hour regarding the landscape and lighting plans at Fayetteville Hall, for Fayetteville Hall. Through various members of your board, though various members of your board expressed their concern that they didn't want to make this process overly onerous for future applicants, that was precisely the takeaway. I'd like to address several matters raised during the meeting. First, speaking as the author of three bestselling gardening books and over a million words of garden advice in print, I can assure you that this insistence on native planting materials is overblown. While it is true that native plants are often more beneficial to the environment, it is factually untrue to state that natives are the answer to every landscape situation and that natives are the only reliable choice for attracting pollinators. A very rational discussion of the matter can be found here. A link is provided in the email. In short, what the article urges is that the best plant be chosen for the location and circumstances. Often, that's a native, but sometimes it's not. It also notes that pollinators don't universally shun non-native species, and in fact, many non-natives are highly beneficial to bees and other insects. I hope the planning board does not adopt a dogmatic point of view that everything must be all native all the time. What's infinitely more important is that a plant, the plant in question be able to handle the extremes of the climate crisis and that it be right for its situation. Also, certain members of your board seem to be confused about meaning of cultivar. One of your members spat out the term with such disdain that you would have thought it a swear word. A cultivar is merely a man-made cross, which can be from either native or non-native plants and often produces a new variety that is infinitely better than its parent. Again, we should not be writing off any plant that has the potential to better endure climate stress. Secondly, now wearing my preservationist's hat as both a former member of the Historic Commission, current president of the Southborough Historical Society, and principal of a company that specializes in historic landscapes, I can assure you that using AZAC in water-prone areas is not only common practice these days, but best practice on historic structures. The Secretary of the Interior's guidelines haven't been updated in almost twenty years, and while helpful, are no longer the last word for preservationists. Artificial wood has advanced so much in the past few decades that it is the most indistinguishable form, it is almost indistinguishable from real wood, and has a much lower carbon footprint over its lifetime. As it never has to be painted or replaced, I laud its use on Fayetteville Hall, and I am sure the Historic Commission will support this view. Regarding the exterior lighting, I was puzzled that so much time and worry was spent over minor spillage issues when, as a town, we recently voted to light over intense objection on the part of many, including me, outdoor playing fields. Even our town buildings violate dark skies principles. I'd note, as a glaring example, the awful uplighting on the Cordova Road Town Office's sign. Across the street, the woodward field lights are constantly on during bad weather or when no one is on the field. Multiple complaints have been made about this, yet nothing is done. Surely, getting the woodward lighting under control would be better use of your resources, not to mention saving the taxpayers' considerable expense. Finally, as the originator of the adaptive reuse bylaw, I would like to stress that the spirit of the law was intended to be adaptive, as you yourself noted and that the folks that come to you under this bylaw have already taken the important step of committing to a difficult and expensive process of working with an historic structure. They should be commended and helped in every way, not pelted with zippy one-liners like, "When you know better, you do better," which, while witty on the surface, only serve to divide the room. Latitude should be the order of the day, and Mr. Deli Piscoli wants roses. For heaven's sakes, let the man have roses. He is saving one of our architectural treasures at a huge personal expense, and I can assure you, bees love roses, not to mention their historically appropriate, another important consideration. In short, I urge you to speed this matter to its conclusion so we can all begin to enjoy the benefits that the Renaissance of this building will bring. All best, Michael Wyshon, President, Southborough Historical Society."
Thank you. I want to jump right to the draft decision. You have that, right, John?
I have two here. I don't know which one's which, but...
With my notes incorporates all the comments from both attorneys that came after that was typed on. Yeah, so one with the written notes is the one to go by.
These both have written. Now, these just...
Oh, one's major site plan and one is the adaptive reuse.
Oh, okay.
One's the special permit.
It's confusing, okay.
I know. It's two separate permits.
Okay. I got you. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
So...
So, we're doing...
The one that says, "Decision of Major Site Plan Approval."
Okay.
So, there's some items on there that you object to, and there's at least one on there that we object to. So, this is close, and if you're willing to go through this pretty much, or at least go over the ones that are highlighted or have notes on them, we might be able to get through this tonight. This is kind of on the edge of, it's, from my experience, it seems like it's closer to being able to be voted on than not, but it depends on how we get through this. Do you feel comfortable going through these things?
Sure.
And see if we can get them resolved tonight?
I think it's productive.
Okay. All right. Let me ask the board, agree? Go through these items? Okay. All right. Why don't we do that, then? But there's always a concern that if there's just either too many open items where the language isn't finalized, or there's a few that are kind of complex, then we might need more time to resolve them. But I'm with you and the board as far as being willing to go through these, see where that takes us. So, why don't we go with Mrs. Houlihan with your comments?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I did prepare comments after receiving and reviewing the material. So, as Karina read, we received a letter from Michael Wyshon, president of the Southborough Historical Society. I'm glad he watched the tape and voiced his opinion. We can only hope that more people do the same. Thank you, Mr. Wyshon. And I did want to make two comments about the letter, as those comments relate to the adaptive reuse of this Fayetteville Village Hall. So, he expressed, addressed the landscaping design presented by the proponent, specifically the planning board's request to use native plantings. In his letter, he states, I quote, "I hope the planning board does not adopt a dogmatic point of view that everything must be all native all the time," end quote. I personally did not present a dogmatic point of view, but offered a compromise that the proponent plant native to meet the zoning requirements. I have identified three instances of not meeting zoning requirements found in one seventy-four point one-three. Section E, the vehicular use plantings, requires six shade trees or nine ornamental or seven mixed for the thirty-two parking spaces. The proposed eight London plane trees are non-native. Section D, side and rear planting area, buffer between the abutting property and handicap parking includes hydrangea and lavender, non-native species. Section H, existing vegetation indicates that no existing tree of six inches in caliper or greater shall be removed or have grade change more than one foot unless dictated by public health, access safety, or identification of the premises. You have provided no rationale for moving the two existing trees currently in the front of the property today. Again, not meeting zoning requirements. We also received correspondence from your attorney stating that you would not comply with the native species request. So, I'm asking, in the spirit of compromise, as an elected town representative and in meeting the citizens' requests stated in our bylaws, which I quote, "Encouraging the use of native species in all landscaping plans," that we achieve this compromise. I have not seen that attempted in the plans. I'm not at liberty to vote in favor of a plan that makes no attempt to meet the bylaws, also known as the approved laws of the citizens of the town for which I have been elected to honor.
I have one more comment, Mr. Morris. My final comment is relative to the lighting of the flagpole. The plans state that the flagpole will be uplit with fifteen watt landscape bullet floodlight LED bulb for twenty-four hour illumination. I did my own research and validated that illuminating the night sky is harmful to our environment. In fact, the International Dark Sky Association recommends six concepts to ensure safety and security, protect wildlife, and promote the goal of the dark night skies. The number-one recommendation is, I quote, "Always choose fully shielded fixtures that emit no light upward." The planning board has hired a consultant to help rewrite the lighting bylaws, and again, in the spirit of working collaboratively to continue to protect our natural habitat. I found several IDA-approved downlighting fixtures that are installed at the finial of the pole and actually appear to provide a much more environmentally friendly and aesthetically pleasing illumination for our flag. I would suggest that the proponent evaluate this lighting and reconsider the uplighting. I printed off all of my research, should you like to help that. Thank you, Mr. Morris, for allowing me to comment.
Might as well go ask the rest of the board. Any other questions or comments at this time?
Mrs. Luttrell. I would like to agree with Mrs. Houlihan's comments. Many of mine are the same. I would like to say that I'm in support of historic preservation, and I worked on creating the adaptive reuse bylaw. However, an applicant for adaptive reuse should not be exempted from all other zoning requirements. In fact, the adaptive reuse bylaw, one seven-four thirteen point eight E two, states that the adaptive reuse special permit shall be issued in accordance with the zoning bylaw. And I agree that flexibility should be given if parts of the bylaw impede historic preservation, as it was acknowledged that it may not be possible to avoid all light pass, light trespass. However, the inclusion of native plants in no way impedes historic preservation. In fact, many natives were in the colonial revival gardens at the time. This project isn't just fixing up a historic building. It's also in an increase in parking, and it's a business in a residential district. So, care needs to be taken to ensure this project does not disrupt the neighborhood. And I also, I don't know if we should wait. I have some additional conditions for the special permit.
Are they related to what you were just talking about?
No, they have to do with the use.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we wait?
I have no, nothing to add.
So, you have the September ninth Fussin O'Neil letter?
We do.
Well, that's shorter than the draft conditions, and it may relate to them, so...
So, you don't want to go through this?
Yes, we will, but I think the, I know it seems like I'm all over the place here tonight, but we'll get there. If you have the Fussin O'Neil letter, we can go through that. It's only...
I haven't seen it, but Peter has.
It's only a couple of pages. The first item deals with the nine-foot by eighteen-foot parking spaces versus the required nine-and-a-half feet by eighteen feet. So, Fussin O'Neil, as they usually do in these type of things, we defer to the planning board to ensure that the waiver is requested, and you have requested that waiver.
We did give you a formal request, yes.
You did?
Part of your record. Yes, it was a written request.
Right. So, have we voted on that waiver? Do you recall? If not, we'll just do it now.
I believe they were discussed but not formally voted. There was like a consensus...
I don't think anything was voted, Mr. Morris, to my knowledge, but other than the extensions that we've been doing.
So, does the board want to get that one behind us? Mr. Mills?
You can read it right out of the decision.
Motion?
Under the major site plan, under the waiver section. You'll see it's the first one. So, take this major site plan decision with my notes on it, right on the top of your pile. I know, that one, yep. Okay. Is that the major site plan? Yep. Go to the second page, page number three, at the very bottom, waiver requests.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the waiver request for zoning one seven-four dash twelve C two. Each parking space shall be at least nine-and-a-half feet wide by eighteen feet long, per the request of the applicant, for forty, forty-two Central Park, or Central Street, Fayetteville Hall.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
What's the reason for the waiver?
In the, I tell, in the parentheses following... In the, I tell, in the parentheses following the bylaw reference, it says the request is to allow parking spaces size of nine feet wide by eighteen feet wide due to site constraints.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Four to zero, so we've granted that waiver. The next item is, has to do with 174-12E. No more than twenty-five percent of the required parking spaces shall be located on the required front yard. In view of the plans, it appears that approximately fifty percent of the required parking is located within the front setback. Fussin' O'Neill understands the applicant is redeveloping an existing parking lot, not currently meet the regulations. However, the applicant is increasing the size of the parking lot, thus additional parking spaces within the setback. The applicant should review and revise as required. And they say we defer to the planning board to ensure that the waiver is requested. Karina, is that...
Yes, in the major site plan, following the waiver request that you just read, is the second waiver request on the top of page four.
Any questions or comments on that from the board? Any questions or comments from the public regarding the way the parking is? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we accept the waiver request for zoning 174-12E. Not more than twenty-five percent of the required parking spaces shall be located in the required front yard, per the applicant's request for 40-42 Central Street Fayetteville Hall.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Just a question, would we accept the request or grant the waiver?
We grant the waiver.
Yeah, grant the waiver.
So the motion's to grant the waiver?
Correct.
And it was seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, so that one's granted. The next one on the Fussin' O'Neill letter has to do with the number of parking spaces based on the use. Is, okay, the applicant has not shown the number of parking spaces provided will meet the proposed uses of the building. That's the original comment. Since then, it's come down to, to be conservative, the parking analysis should use the retail store parking requirements of one space per one hundred and fifty square feet. For a four thousand four hundred square foot building, total of thirty parking spaces is required. Since thirty-two parking spaces are proposed, no further comment is necessary. So there's no waiver here, it's considered... The board, in its overall vote, would consider this to be in compliance. Next item has to do with 174-13E1 through 5. The proposed landscaping of all new or expanded parking lots of five or more spaces must comply with the requirements of Section 174-13E. Parking does not appear to meet the landscape requirements outlined within this section. And then, uh... Following requirements still need to be met. It has to do with the trees shall be located within or adjacent to parking lots as tree islands, medians, and at the end of the parking bays, traffic delineations, or between rows of parking spaces in a manner such that no parking space is located more than sixty feet from a tree. And we discussed that over the last couple of hearings. Final comment here is, we agree the shade trees are within sixty feet of all parking. We defer to the planning board to determine if they will require an interior landscaping island within the parking lot. And I think when we discussed that, you addressed that by talking about the additional trees along Central Street. And I don't think there was any more comments from the board relative to this requirement. Open it up to the board, any questions or comments on that one? So we're good with the, we're good with that one in that Fussin' O'Neill considers it to be in compliance. Whether or not the board does, we, by accepting the plan, we would have the authority to accept it as is. So that takes care of the Fussin' O'Neill comments. So let's go into the draft decision. The one that says, "Decision of Major Site Plan Approval." And it's all marked up. So it looks like, and Karina, jump in if I'm missing anything. Going to do these kind of by exception. There's a note on number two, septic system.
Would you like me to go through them, since I wrote them on here? And I'm very familiar with all of them.
Is it okay that we skip over the ones that have no comments on them? Like for example, number three?
Oh yes, we'll only talk about the ones that have markups, revisions, okay? And I'm just going to go with this. Okay, so we would see...
So the people in the room can see what we're looking at, what we're reading, without the markups though?
Yes, what you see on the screen is the draft decision prior to both attorneys' comments that I was able to put onto, in handwriting on my draft, that the board has and the applicant has. And it's the same document, it's just with comments that I'm going to read, so that everybody's familiar.
And you have that mouse or something that points?
Yeah, I can do that.
I know at home they can't see it, but if, as we go through this, you can point to the words or the line that we're, so the people in the room can follow.
Sure, and there's not, it looks like a lot, but there aren't that many. I'm only going to go over the ones that have revisions, right?
Yeah, or the ones that were added and the ones that we have in there that they object to and the ones that they put in that we have in there and they objected to, or the other way around.
Alright, I'll try to expedite this. So the first comment from Town Council was that typically Fayetteville Hall, or traditionally Fayetteville Hall is considered Fayetteville Village Hall. And that would be a revision to the name right up here. In item number two...
That's fine, fine.
Yeah, I figured, some of these are just small type of things, but just to be fair. In item number two, right here towards the end, I had a typo, I said septic system in. It's just supposed to be septic system. We'll jump down to item number four. And again, this is just procedural history, these aren't approval conditions. This is just standard language that we put in the permits. We go to number four. Town Council asked that at the end of that statement that we add, "The applicant is under purchase and sales agreement with the town of Southborough for the subject property." Just to clarify that currently the town still owns the property. Then we'll jump down to item number seven. You'll see the date here, this is the last, the prior revision to the plans. The decision usually has the most current set of plans, so that will be changed to September 3rd, 2019, if those are the final plans. We jump down to a section where we identify all the documents that were submitted. And then item number nine is a list of correspondence received from various departments. And the very last item is Town Council Review of Conditions of Approval. That's going to be updated to say Town Council's Review of the Major Site Plan and Adaptive Reuse Decisions dated today's date, September 9th, since I received them today. Then we're going to jump to the findings. The findings are various facts about the application. And if we go to number two, it discusses the encroachment of the existing building and stairway and the proposed handicap ramp. Town Council indicated that he would like to see after the word right-of-way layout. So it would read, southeast corner of the existing building stairs and bulkhead, as well as the proposed accessible ramp at the southeast corner of the building encroaches on the right-of-way layout, but not upon the paved surface of Grove Street, a public way. To clarify that, we, there is an understanding, there is an encroachment, but that it will never be on the paved surface of the right-of-way, within the paved surface.
That's accurate, Peter?
Ah, yes.
Then we will jump, sorry, we will jump to where we move on to the decision and vote of the board. So this is a paragraph that reiterates, that explains the vote that will happen when the hearing closes and a vote is taken. And again, the most current plans have to be stated there, so I had the prior plans. That August 19th will change to September 3rd or any later plan that's approved. Also, at the end of this, at the beginning of this paragraph right here, it says in accordance. Town Council indicated it should say all in accordance with the plans. Then at the end of this paragraph here, after PE, it shall also state incorporated herein by reference, so that the plans are incorporated into the decision by reference and the conditions are as well. That was Town Council. Now we go down to the approval conditions. And we'll go to number three, right here. It states, "The auction house owner shall apply for and obtain a revocable license from the Board of Selectmen with regards to encroachment on Grove Street, public right-of-way layout." So we'll be adding the word layout wherever it says right-of-way, "with clearly defined plan showing the subsequent encroachment to be constructed, the lines of public right-of-way layout and the line of the paved surface of the right-of-way layout." And then Town Council opined, a statement should be added that no encroachment shall be made upon the paved surface of the public way Grove Street. Just reiterating the same statement that was in the findings. Okay? Then we jump to number eight. And I had this section, this item highlighted. I'll need to fill in from the plans what that time is. Are you able to tell me that one, it is off the top of your head?
I can read it right here, it says, "Hours of operation, weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Weekends, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m."
Okay.
So we have on Saturdays and you have weekends, so that means there could be something there on Sunday?
Auctions, sometimes it's a common day to do it.
That's what we discussed at the public hearing.
Okay. Now, item number nine has to do with landscaping. And it reads, "Landscaping shall be in conformance with the landscaping plans as submitted by the applicant and approved by the planning board, except as otherwise provided in these conditions. Such landscaping shall be maintained, repaired, or replaced by the owner as needed to maintain compliance with such plans throughout this use of the site." And I use that terminology and I have a note on my document that says confirm that language with the planning board and with the proponent, that such, compliance with such plans throughout the use of the site. This use of the site. So it's specific to the auction house. If the property ever sold, I don't know, or transferred, ownership, if the property transferred ownership, but the use stayed the same, then all this still is required. But say it was sold and then they changed the use to a meeting hall again or something, they would have to come back anyway to the planning board for modification.
Agreed.
So I thought that throughout the, this use of the site would be appropriate language. Okay. And I reiterate that in yellow here, "Any future changes will require modification." The first bullet item is, "Wherever landscaping is required per the bylaws, straight species native plant shall be used for a newly, all newly created or disturbed landscaping areas." This comment, I received feedback from Attorney Pizzoni that the applicant would, does not want this condition in the approval. The second bullet item was fine. The third bullet item, the same thing. Planning board through the town planner shall be consulted prior to construction and notified of any replacement materials which shall be native species, straight species as applicable and approved by town planner. That was another condition of contention. So the first bullet and the third bullet, Attorney Pizzoni indicated that they did not want that in the decision.
So are those the only two that they want removed?
Yes, I believe that is the case.
Yeah, the other items are more clarification items, so I'm prepared to address this point if necessary. I may not dissuade the two board members, but I'd like to at least explain where we're at with this and possibly I get traction, and if I don't, you know, we'll have to deal with it as a separate matter. But you currently are adopting some new procedures on natives. You did provide me with that document. As I had stated at the public hearing, when I went online, the reference was to your, the current published document, which did provide for the London plane tree to be an approved and allowable tree. That is the tree that Mr. Piscoli did select. And possibly prior to a certain date, I'm not sure when you folks had started adopting the procedures on the natives, but the London plane tree was an acceptable tree. And the hope here is that, again, Mr. Piscoli's trying to create an environment for this historic building that represents what he had as his vision for the reuse of the site. And I have eight of those London plane trees there, so I am short one tree to comply with Mrs. Houlihan's observation about the minimum requirements. I had also suggested to John that possibly we could plant some mountain laurel or something that was a native in another area on the site, particularly over by the railroad tracks or something, to have some more landscaping, but he would still be able to have this formal landscaping where it is. So we're not off by very much. And I just hate to see the project, which has a great deal of scale and scope that's important to a lot of interests, get lost in the minutia of a couple of native trees. So that's the one thing I can state, is that the London plane tree was specifically asked by Mr. Piscoli. When I looked into the tree, it's a very traditional tree, it's a street tree that is in most communities. It's what I had proposed for the project that I'm involved in. I have since changed mine because the request was for native, so I made the change on my site. But for Mr. Piscoli's site, he was firmly convinced that that was the right tree for this project. The only other point was that we are removing two trees at the front of this building. Those two trees have taken over the appearance of the building. They're actually enveloping part of the building, and that's why we wanted to remove them. And I think that's important to, again, the overall restoration and appearance of the overall project, would be the ability to remove those trees and plant a new tree that can be maintained properly.
Or basically, Mr. Morris, the trees have not been maintained and they're overgrown or, you know...
But they're not going to shape up again, you can't just cut them.
Let's go to the wording here. What words would you take out, or what words would you add that you could live with?
The word native, because there's a definition of native now that you've introduced through your document that Karina provided me. And in the native, it's, the London plane tree is not native to Massachusetts, unfortunately. There are plenty of them in Massachusetts, but it's not a native plant.
So what if, and you said something about, you know, one tree short?
Well, I was one tree short of satisfying Mrs. Houlihan's observation about the fact that had we selected a different tree that was a native, for example, I am one tree short of that compliance. And then I wouldn't have to do anything further. But again, Mr. Piscoli was quite insistent on me maintaining the London plane tree, because that's the tree he selected for the appearance of this site.
So, um, I hope I'm following you, but even if you got, put one more tree somewhere, you still would not be in compliance with this note?
The way it's being interpreted now, because, again, you have a document that I don't believe you even voted on yet, but was Karina did provide it to me, that said that these, this is the list of natives that you're supposed to work from. And there, that London plane tree is not in the list.
Sure, but I, just thinking if we... just thinking if we got rid of these two notes, um, and just relied on what's on the plans.
Well, that, that's what we would prefer. I mean, that's what Mr. Pizzoni was suggesting, is that we just reference the plans. Which are detailed as to where those plants are going to be located and how they're going to be located.
Mrs. Luttrell.
The Southborough, the zoning code landscaping says the town of Southborough encourages the use of native species in all landscaping plans. And that's from nineteen eighty-six.
Right, it, it says encourage though, it doesn't say mandates. That's my only observation.
There is zero native species in this project, zero. Um, the street tree guidelines are out of the D P W. They are not part of the zoning code. Um, additionally, the street trees say whether they're native or not, and that is not a native. Um, the zoning code also encourages the use of salt tolerant trees next to the street and that plane tree is also not salt tolerant.
That's completely contr- contrary to Cervicchio's, Arborist, and everything I've researched. But I'm not gonna, I don't want to debate it because it's just, it's, it's not productive.
Just trying to get us past this because, um, it would be nice to have, uh, the decision document with language that we can all live with. So, um. It just seems to me that there's the, the board has to make a decision or the proponent has to make a decision whether to go with what at least one bo- board member considers to be native plants or not. So, um. And then if, if we get to a point where we can't agree on how to handle this, then it'll just go to a vote. And we have four people here tonight. And that might be part of the decision also as to whether or not, uh, the proponent wants to, uh, wait to have a fifth. So, um, is, is there? What if you planted a native across the street in the park? That's town property also.
You know, somehow it's getting interpreted that I have something against native plants, okay? Okay, poison ivy is a native plant, okay? That's, that, that's a native plant, okay? So, I mean, there's a lot of different native plants. Most native plants are not, are not giving this building the image that I'm looking for. I am looking for an ornamental garden and, and some color and inviting. I happen to disagree fundamentally with, with that. I, uh, I feel this whole argument that the insects and the bees and all this others, it's all like one way or the other. It isn't. Um, and as far as compromise, uh, somebody mentioned that earlier. I mean, you asked me to do a few things and note the plans. I, I addressed every one of them, I hope to your satisfaction about the azac just on the water table and the regular wood everywhere else where there was that snafu in the plant. I corrected that. And the shutters to make sure that was clear and other things that you had asked for. I don't see what the big deal is, you know? I'm, I'm, I'm doing a beautiful restoration of this building. I'm making this an icon for Fayetteville. It's in a, basically an abandoned building. It looks like hell. I'm providing parking for the town. I'm the only person that stepped up to do it and I'm the only person that will do it. So it's either that or you want an open lot. Is that a big stretch to really work me over on a few plants that I think would really look good aesthetically? I don't see why that is such a big thing on, on, on a situation like this. It's called give and take. You know, and I think I, I'm being very reasonable here. I'm the only person that stepped up to do this. Oh, that's right, I forgot. You had one other person that filed, that wanted the building for five thousand dollars to put affordable housing there, which the Selectmen rejected, I, I assume is what happened. And, and this last go around, I was the only person that stepped up to do it. I'm capable of doing it. I have the knowledge to do it and I'll do a fine job on it. And I don't see why the, the heels are being dug in so deeply on this when I'm being reasonable. I'm stepping forward to fix an eyesore. What's the big deal?
So.
That's my position.
If the word native was removed from both of these notes, you'd be okay?
But in the, in the, I want to answer your question though. I didn't finish. So, excuse me, I didn't mean to have that sound, um, uh, negative. If you want to add a few other plants that are so-called native on that list, I'm willing to do that. But I'd like the core plants that I have there to remain. If you want to add some additional, a, a couple of native things, we could work together, uh, Ms. Luttrell and, and Ms. Houlihan. Uh, Ms., uh, if you'd like, elsewhere on the property, I'd be willing to find some compromise there as Peter suggested. But I'd like the core landscaping to remain. And then we could add some, so there is some semblance of, so you, there's, there's no natives. There's a lot of native stuff growing on that plant along the railroad bed and everything else. That's what native is. A lot of opinion, people's opinion, natives are just weeds. But anyway.
So going back to, uh, what will be typed on this, in this decision. I- is it that simple that by removing the word native from both of those bullets, you're okay? Because I'll ask for a motion to remove the word native from both and see where that takes us. But I don't want to do that unless.
But, well, it says, I guess encouraged versus required in the bylaw because it does say is required per the bylaws. So what, what, what I guess would, we'd prefer to say is that what the plans represent is what we're voting on. I mean, that's why we do the plans, so that we can reference them in the decision. So I believe the landscaping is properly covered on the plans. And then if jo- if as a means of compromise that we were going to add a certain number of, of natives, that could be written down in the decision. That would be fine.
What do you want us to do? Do you want us to remove the word native or do you want us to remove the bullets?
What I want you to do is realize that the, the overall project is vastly superior to what ultimately is going to happen here. And, and look at the ben- the overall benefits and have two columns and add points. So you could take some points off for the, the native thing not being met and add a lot of points for the aesthetics and everything else. And overall becomes a win for the town. That's what, nobody leaves the table with a hundred percent of the cookies, you know? It's called sharing. That's what it is. And that's what I'd like to see the board take up, is look at it that way. How you do it, and I'm not a lawyer, Don, so, you know, how, and I'm happy to say that. Um, the, you know, the reality is, is I don't see why it, everybody isn't excited about what I'm doing here.
So what you're getting down to, Ms. Morris, is in the item number nine.
What I'm getting down to is.
No, but the first sentence is fine.
Is that I have to sign this piece, it, I have, this has to go to a vote and then I have to sign this piece of paper. If, if it passes, okay? So when I sign these decisions, I read them. And if there's something in there, it should be part of it. And if it's not in there, then it's not part of it. So what I'm trying to do is get the words on the paper that we can agree to.
Correct. So, so the fir- the paragraph is fine. You, the bullets don't need to be there. Do you want to leave the bullet about the, the weed control and the, uh, and the, um, the non-invasives, that's fine. Cause that, that, that's going to be applicable regardless. That could be in the paragraph. I just don't think you need the other two bullets that are trying to bring out the point about natives. The landscaping plans are defined and they are explicit by count and location of plant materials. And it's well in excess of the minimum requirement.
Okay, so your request is to remove the bullets?
I mean, you could keep in the one about the chemical weed control. The suggestion would be is to.
Yeah, the, the two bullets, the first and the third one.
Right, that, that, that they, those are the ones that are taking the context of what plants are done now and changing them.
Okay, let me open it up to the board. Uh, questions, comments on a possible, uh, motion to remove those two bullets? Mrs. Houlihan, go ahead.
Uh, just a point of clarity, is this vote a super majority required to approve this plan? In general?
No, uh, for site plan, uh, if there's, if there's three of us, if there's four of us here, we need three votes.
Okay. Um, my comment is, I, I, you know, to the proponent, I am trying to bring a compromise. We've given you the, the parking waivers. We've given the light trespass. We're asking for the native trees. I am sorry that you feel like you need to be defensive towards us to try and uphold our laws. But I'm recent board member. I'm elected. I've seen too many committees in town not abide by the laws that the town people have approved. The bylaw is, as I read before, I cannot approve something by just allowing a proponent not to even address the laws that are on the books. That's my comment, Mr. Morris.
Any other comments? Mrs. Luttrell.
Um, again, in agreement with, uh, Mrs. Houlihan, I would also, um, question the, um, planting around the parking lot supposed to be a buffer to buffer the parking. Um, and whether lavender, which gets to three feet tall, is actually a buffer?
The lavender wasn't intended to be a buffer. It was intended to add color and have the hydrangea, which really becomes, you know, grand and, you know, big over time.
But are, aren't they lined up like right next to each other?
Yeah, well, so it's, so there's, you have the s- you have the, you have the, 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 um, um, the lavender in between and you have the, the, the other plant right in the, in the middle there. And that was to give more of a ground cover type look and I split them over time. And then you have the large, um, hydrangea, which become quite, quite grand. And they, it's a nice buffer and it gives you color and the plants, the, the flower lasts a long, long time. And they're also nice for cuttings and I like to do vases with cuttings and things.
Mr. Morris, could, could we just skip nine for the moment and come back? Uh, because we might be able to get through this. Maybe we could take just a five minute, that I could speak with John in the hallway.
Let's try that.
All right, but, but I don't need to do that now. Let's just try to get through the rest of it. So in case there's something else I need to speak to John about in the hallway, I could do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
My, my one comment would be if we remove those two, um, and we do reach a co- compromise on other native specific planning on the property, that how, where they'd be addressed somewhere either on the plan or something.
Yeah, but I, I can't do all that right now. Let's just go through the rest of it.
It would have to be a new bullet that would state what's going to be added.
Let's see where we get.
I'd also like to respond to Ms. Houlihan's comments, if I may. And she's saying that you gave this waiver and that waiver. Well, this is a historic property. This is an adaptive reuse. This is not like the prior, uh, when you did the parking garage that I witnessed, you know, prior to this hearing, last couple of hearings, where you have a rock, you know, it was a fresh build on Route nine. It's, it's, it's two different things. This is, I'm working within the constraints of an ill, a misshapen property that was, you know, I mean, part of the building's not even on the property. I mean, that's how things were done, you know, years ago. People didn't have all these rules. They just dropped it. So I'm working with existing set of difficult factors, which is the reason why we asked for those things. I don't look at those as, as, as some huge give from the board. I look at it as that's what the adaptive reuse bylaw is. Adaptive, you're adapting to what's there. And that's, you're going to have to bend. Otherwise, you might as well take the word adaptive out of it. Because there's no, there's no adapting. I'm trying to adapt and that's what Peter's done. And I, I don't see that as, as, as anything other than really should be looked at as a way to get the ultimate product, which is the nice building restored and, and the neighborhood buttressed by a re- restoration, rather than a parking lot or, or some other, uh, you know, less, less form of development. So, um, I just want to make sure you know that. I don't feel I'm being defensive. I think I'm being totally honest that how I see it. And just like you're elected, I mean, I'm also putting my money and my family's money into this and working hard and this, the town of Southborough is going to benefit this for the next hundred years. Long after all you folks have retired and long after I'm gone, they're going to have a nice, beautiful building to enjoy. That's what you're going to get out of this. I think that should be the focus.
Let's move on to the, uh, the next one, which is number eleven.
Okay, moving on, number eleven. Um, applicant to provide plan to show appropriate compliance for turning radius for the Ashdod Bus Forty-five Design Standard. Um, that was left in there because it was a comment from the fire department. I know you explained it previously with the sidewalk there. Maybe you could just send me a little sketch via email with the turning radius and I'll put it in the record.
We can do that.
For the file, if everyone's okay with that. Um, um, I have a note on number eleven, twelve, and thirteen, just to copy those comments over to the adaptive reuse, which I had deleted them out of that decision. But the adaptive reuse incorporates, um, uh, parking and access as one of the criteria for the special permit. Um, if we go down to number fourteen, I had it highlighted, final plans to indicate hydrant to the site. You added that, so that one would be removed. Uh, number fifteen, shall identify existing water supply line. You added that, so that one would be removed. Uh, number sixteen, final plans shall show more conservative required parking calcs. You did add that to the plan, so that can be removed. Um, then we go to, um, there are a couple of, there are three new conditions that were proposed. And Attorney Pizzoni for the proponent would like to add that the antique style designation sign for the premises be similar to that as shown on the plan. In other words, there, we mentioned the no parking sign and, um, you know, the fire access protective type signs. But he wanted a specific condition identifying the facility sign, even though it's shown on the plan that we mention it as a condition. So, um, we were going to say antique style designation sign for the premises similar to, similar to that as shown on the plan. Just saying that that would be there. Another one, um, that town council wanted was just a repeat, no encroachment shall be made upon the paved surface of the public way Grove Street. Um, it's in the findings, but as a condition it sets it. And then Attorney Pizzoni wanted, uh, a comment that said any contradiction in the plan, between the plan and the decision that the plans shall rule, um, we usually don't put that in here because there's, I think there's an industry standard of what takes precedence. And I understand probably the motivation was because of the landscaping possibly. Um, so that's the questionable one. The only other comment I had was on number twenty and that was just to confirm that the plans needed to be recorded, um, and not just the decision. That's just, uh, I think just the decisions get recorded, um, for the special permit.
And I had no problem with that being a reduced version of the plan, so long as the, because this, these are not set up as a recordable instrument.
Right, so they would be in the plan, in the decision as a reference added, if that's okay with the board, because they're still visible. And, um, that's all I had for the major site plan.
So let's go back to the note about the plan shall rule. Um, I agree with you that that should not be in the, in the, uh, decision. This decision should be silent relative to what rules.
That's my note right after number nineteen. The audience can't see it because it's a pencil note. But again, that's the one that says any contradiction in the plan versus the decision that the plan shall rule. We'd like to strike that, I believe.
Okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, as long as the plan's referenced what we're going to do. So that's, that's all I want to work towards. Get the decision to match. Right now they don't match, so we need to do that.
Right, we've, we've had this, it happened occasionally, not that often, where something in the decision, um, may say one thing and then the plan may say another. And then we rely on which, uh, goes into more, usually which one goes into more detail. That's pretty much engineering, engineering practice. Okay, so.
So could we have five minutes?
I don't know, uh, are you going to allow public comment?
Oh, sure.
When's the appropriate time for that? I didn't know.
If you'd like to have that now, if you, or, or you wanted to take your time out.
Well, I know there's a lot of people here. I don't know who wants to talk or who doesn't, you know, before we caucus, I, I was curious if.
Okay, you'll have the benefit of their comments also.
Yeah.
Uh, go back to the board. Anybody from the board right now? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? Have to get, go to the microphone. Mr. Caleri, whoever goes to the microphone is allowed to speak or just grab it.
Jim Caleri, 51 Central Street, I followed this process except for one night I missed. I understand the argument about the native trees. I think there's a conflict in our zoning that needs to be resolved, probably a town meeting. If this goes down, as far as I'm concerned, if we don't do this project, then we either gotta remove the historic bylaw preservation altogether, let developers tear it down, build something there. If we're gonna stay with the historic bylaw, we also gotta realize, this project, this building, and I'm very familiar with the building, none of you are, Andy may have lived there, but I live there now. This neighborhood, this area of town has been neglected for years and been lied to by the town of Southborough over this piece of property years ago. We were promised a park there, we were shown nice drawings by Vera when she was the town planner, this was gonna look like, and they never did anything. Oh, we didn't have the money, we just wanted you to support the idea. We never got it, we have a piece of dirt. We have a building that the town owned, is a disgrace, and it sits there. My neighborhood, not yours, is the one getting destroyed here. It's being bought up by schools. The Old Fable Village District is a joke, along with the one downtown, along with the one in Cordville. We're allowing these properties to deteriorate, we have piles of sand in some of our neighborhoods. This made a lot of sense, when there was a possible of having a two-family there, where the developer was from town, it did perk my interest, because we could grab him and say, hey, look, you gotta do this. Once that went down and John stepped up, there was some hope that this building could be preserved and actually made into something the neighborhood would be proud of and be glad to be with. Right now, even the ballpark in the playground, we had to beg and borrow money to get people, donate money to finish the town's park, which got destroyed by a storm, because the town didn't allocate funds to do it. This neighborhood needs a break. When this came, that's why you've never seen me up here, I did step up for this project. And I'd be very, very upset if we go over trees that were native, and a lot of the native trees do not survive with salt. That's a fact, and you people that are involved with trees understand that. So maybe there has to be a mediation to find out what could go there. But when you get into the historic preservation of these properties, they look at what was done when it was built. That was the intent of that bylaw, that's what we were sold at town meeting. And now we're going to change that. We cannot have historic preservation if it's gonna be a conflict constantly at a planning board or the ZBA. The zoning board of appeals denied Walgreens an extension of that building. To which, what do we have down there, a 40B? We have Fable Lane. Look at that in your neighborhood, I don't like it in mine, what those buildings look like, and that's what I'm stuck with. If this building is not passed, I mean, I'm not asking you to sell your soul to it, but if this thing fails, I can guarantee you town meeting is not gonna be good this coming year. Because a lot of people in the neighborhoods are seeing the fight over other projects that has upset the town, I understand that. But this one, nobody in Fable understands why in God's name there's a problem with it. Because we're actually gonna make the whole neighborhood drastically improve before us. So you gotta keep that in mind when you make your decisions. I understand the rules and the regulations, but you do have flexibility if you so desire to use it. If you don't, and you end up, we end up losing this battle on the Fable Village again, you're gonna see significant difference of opinions coming forward at town meeting. I really think this was a great project, I really did. I got all excited about it, rarely do I do that. Because I'm a wire inspector for your town, so I usually don't get involved. But this is the place I sleep at night. I just spent a ton of money refurbishing my house again, because we've made a decision to stay there. And I was talking to my wife before I left tonight, maybe that was a bad decision. Because we were looking at moving. And if we moved, we weren't so sure we were gonna stay in Southborough. Because I don't, I see a lot of the issues with the town that need to be resolved, what the town looks like, what the value of our lives is. Here's a good example. So I kinda lectured you, but you know how I feel, I make no bones about it.
Thank you, anyone else?
Joe Hubley, 6 Winchester Street, Southborough, also chairman of the Historical Commission. I know when, for me personally, when I sat down and talked to Michael Wyshon and a few others on the Historical Commission, and we thought about this adaptive reuse bylaw, this is certainly not what I had intended to have happen to a proponent proposing to renovate and beautify one of our oldest icons in Southborough, over a bunch of trees. And I love trees. But I think that the argument for the trees here is a little extreme, is my opinion, because of its value, as you just look at that picture. That picture says a thousand words right there. I think the proponent is willing to compromise, as, you know, you suggested. I also believe that if we're gonna do native, is this the project to really hold up? This project, I mean, is this the time to hold up a project? Adaptive reuse is supposed to be, you know, waivers granted so that someone can beautify and restore historic building. That's what I thought that the bylaw intended to have happen. But this is obviously four or five meetings here, that we've been talking about trees and bushes, and we have a difference of opinion, I agree. But I mean, I look at it as the historical aspect. John is the only one that's come up, shy of the other guy, that I think he, it was a low bid, went out to, went to rebid, John came in as the highest bid. But with the backing of he's going to beautify and restore that building, which is very important to everyone. I got some people asking me about what's going on with Fable Hall, why is there a delay in this? You know, I'm not one for the blog, but I certainly hear enough of the stuff that goes out there about the blog and the planning board and the delays. I don't go to very many planning board meetings, as you know. But this particular, this particular building has a place in my heart that I don't want to see anyone walk away from this. And so I urge you to pass whatever waivers we need to pass, and give the proponent a little slack in the adaptive reuse to get this project done. Because if it doesn't get done by him, I don't know what's gonna happen to that building, I'm afraid to even think. So I ask for a little bit of leeway on this, because that's what the bylaw intended to be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you want to take your time out?
If you don't mind.
Mr. Mills?
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? All in favor, we'll see in a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Okay, planning board's back in session after a two-minute recess. Did you want to speak, Peter?
Yes, I do, yes. So what we'd like to suggest is that the landscaping plans, as submitted by the applicant and approved by the planning board, except as otherwise provided in these conditions, include a provision that the eight London plane trees that are specified on the plans be substituted with eight native plants as provided on the list that Karina had given me. I don't know if there's a formal name to that list, but we will pick eight trees from that list.
From the draft 2019 Southborough Street Tree Guidelines prepared by Public Works Department.
Correct.
Do you have that on the computer?
I have it in my office.
You have it?
You have? Let me see.
But can we just say eight native trees? Eight straight species native trees?
We can, but you're gonna pick a tree, and if there's no agreement that that's a native tree, we're right back to where we are.
No, I'm specifically referencing that document, because that's what Karina provided me, and those are the native trees. There's not a long list, that much I can assure you. I want to say it was probably seven to eight trees, and that's it. But we are in agreement that we are gonna select from that list eight trees. And those will be, and everything else will stay as on that plan.
You read, you read that. So read it slowly so that Kate can type it, or Karina can write it. And then we'll see if the board is interested in that.
Except as has otherwise provided in these conditions, including that the eight London plane trees as specified on the site plan shall be native plants from.
Native trees.
Native trees, excuse me, from the town of Southborough 2019.
2019 Street Tree Guidelines.
I would just say they should, they were gonna be substituted.
Correct.
Substituted.
For eight trees that are on the.
Is that, questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Luttrell?
I would just note eight straight species native trees. Because those guidelines do have some other trees, like the columnar trees, in certain, there were compromises in certain situations where you couldn't fit bigger trees, so those would not be straight species native.
So what Mimi is indicating, I believe, is that that guidelines includes cultivars and not straight species, because we were working with the DPW for salt tolerance, and we made some compromises there. So not every tree in that policy is native, so that's why you're asking for native?
I'm not trying to find a loophole, I'm really just trying to reference the document you provided.
How quickly can you get that?
The tray on my desk.
All right, we're gonna get it out, sorry.
I think that's the best idea.
Peter says there's only a few trees on the list.
Is that the only remaining item?
That's it.
To your knowledge.
I'll rely on the town planner to guide us on that, John. The other one was the uplight versus the research that Mrs. Houlihan did on a downlight?
That's not referenced in here, because the site plan is showing the other. I have to say, I just don't think that light is gonna look good at that location. And it wouldn't have been historically accurate either, because they wouldn't have put a light like that on a pole. We're trying to have this look historically accurate. The only other way to do it would be to do the ground-mounted light, that will provide light loss. That is not the look we all agreed that we would do. So I would just, we did a small bulb at the, small wattage at the roof peak, and I would hope that we could still vote it that way.
Mimi, are you familiar, more familiar with this? Okay, can you find that list from which we would ask the proponent to select a tree?
If the light is still an issue, we need to resolve that, because the uplight's the only thing that works, other than a ground light.
Or the ground light. Or the ground light.
So there's another one.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Thanks. I don't think it's an issue. It was just a recommendation to look at it, so I know it's part of the conditions right now is number six as an uplight. Just in reading my diligence, I know that there's a specific wattage required for the light, the length of the light pole, and the size of the flag, so to do the American flag justice, obviously, just to make sure you do it justice with the right wattage.
So the decision's actually written correctly, so I'm fine with it. Not item number six?
Yeah.
Peter?
Oh.
How many trees did you see there? What page do you want there, John?
What's that?
What page do you want?
Page seven.
Seven.
And there are seven trees listed.
Seven trees listed.
So we will choose between the red maple, the red oak, the pin oak, and the elm. I'm gonna check with my growers, see what's out there for species, see what they look like. But those, all four are there, so I have, it'd be my choice. It's on the list.
Okay. So the uplight is uplight?
That's already worded correctly.
Yep, and number six.
So we've decided on uplight?
I'll open it up to the board. Mrs. Houlihan, you're not insisting on the downlight?
I'm not. It was just a recommendation for them to do a little bit more diligence, but I'm fine with the uplight.
Mrs. Luttrell?
So according to our bylaw, that flag should be, illumination of flags shall be shielded, so it's a direct light, it's confined to just the surface of the flag.
That's, what I selected, it's a spotlight, and it's, the flag pole isn't that tall off the building, so it's gonna be directed right at the flag.
The flag moves with the wind, you know?
Can it be shielded so it's not shooting straight up into the sky? Can there be a little thing on the top of the flag pole?
It's designed to only go so far.
In the travel of the flag.
I just, there's not gonna be a lot of light loss with this light fixture. I'd say yes, but I don't even know if there's a shield that can go on it. I just don't wanna say yes to something that I'm not, I specified a fixture that I know would work, and it's a very narrow spectrum bulb. The luminaire is specifically designed for this purpose, and that's what's put on the plan.
Mr. Mills?
No, I'm comfortable with that. I wanted to make sure that when I was originally asking, it was gonna illuminate the whole facade of the building. I just wanted specifications, which I think the applicant was in line with to begin with, but it just wasn't on the plan, so I'm comfortable with the uplight, the way he's requesting.
And I am too. Mr. Clary, you had your hand up? You need the mic.
The flag pole lighting issue was, the reason why that's there was so that when you light flag poles, the flags from the ground, first of all, the flag has to be lit fully, extends it all the way 365 degrees. That's kind of a federal standard of lit flag poles. It was so that when you put your light on the ground, it shines up at the flag. It's not showing in anybody's window across the street and that type of thing.
I wanna make sure it's not in your window.
The only one that's gonna probably be affected by the light is probably the buzzard or the crow that's gonna fly over the top, but with this particular setup where that's up on the building that high and there's clearly nothing around it, that would be, even in the houses up on John and Mitchell Street, aren't gonna be affected by that light, the way it's set up to go straight up and it gets the full angle, it should anyway by statute, get the full angle of the flag pole, of the flag itself from the wind. That's a federal standard. We're not required to do it, but we do here in Mass.
So, okay, we're all set with the uplight. Can I just, is there tech, is there a language that we have, even if it's draft, relative to what John said about his choice of, and then you said the name of those, elm?
I can read them to you. It's a-
And this is from page seven?
This is page seven of this-
Of the 2019 tree policy.
Given to me by Mr. Luttrell. It says, red maple, red oak, pin oak, and American elm. Those are the four choices that I'll pick out of those four.
Red maple, red oak, pin oak, and American elm.
Did you, would that be, all would be the same, or would it be a mix? Your choice.
Probably a mix. We'll figure it out, because it's gonna be availability of plant material.
Okay, so, just so we understand, if there's two red oaks and there's two red maples?
They have to be in that group of four, so-
And you can decide how you, how and where you wanna put them relative to the plan, consistent with what-
I have to look at it, we'll go through the layout and see what aesthetically works, but-
Anything else? So, Karina, that was the major site plan approval, and now we have the draft decision for the special permit.
There is only one or two items on the adaptive reuse special permit decision that's different from the major site plan as far as context, so let me just open that up quickly and I'll tell you which ones. So if you look at the decision, the draft decision of special permit for adaptive reuse, you see many of the same comments, Fayetteville Village Hall, my typos, the comments about the applicant is under purchase and sale agreement on number four, number seven, the date of the plans to be updated, item number nine, in the list of correspondence, updating that town council's review is of the decision and the date. One of the changes that is specific to this decision is item number three, under the findings. Under this piece of the decision, we usually explain the criteria of the permit. So if you go to the bylaw, they usually set up, there's a, an intent, purpose, definitions, and then there's a criteria for the decision, where you list what the planning board considers when they go to approve something. So what I show in number three is in accordance with 174-13-8F of the bylaw, where the planning board may issue special permit for adaptive reuse of historic buildings. The criteria for decisions shall be consistent with section 174-9, which is the special permit section. So I just had four bullets listed that were specific to the adaptive reuse. Town council asked me to add just the purpose from the special permit section of the bylaw, which reads, a bullet item would say, the use sought and its characteristics shall be in harmony with the intent and purpose of, sorry, I just can't see anymore. Harmony with intent and purpose of the chapter are not in conflict of public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, and the use is not substantially detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood or destructive of property values therein. So it's one bullet item I'd add, and it's directly from the special permit section of the bylaw.
That's fine with us.
Okay. Everything else, item number seven, we added, you know, layout, the right-of-way layout not upon the paved surface, the date of the plan to be updated. When you go through the decisions, under conditions of approval, oh yes, in the decisions, the second paragraph, again, here it says, in accordance, we wanna say all in accordance, and at the very end we're going to add, after PE incorporated to here in by reference, under this decisions of approval, number one, because there are no waivers for the adaptive reuse of historic buildings, special permit, I'll strike the first few words saying, except for specific waivers granted in this one, this piece right here. Item number three is repetitive from the major site plan, where we say layout after right-of-way, and no encroaching shall be made on the paved surface of the right-of-way. And then I have a note down here after number seven, shutters will be included. I would need to add conditions eight, 11, 12, 13, and 16 from the major site plan, which are just related to the signs, the, anything that wasn't deleted there. Those were for access and parking, and they were already in the other condition anyway. Number 11, where it references and plans to be recorded, I'll modify that to say a reduced version to be included with the decision. And then, at the very end, I'm going to add, after number 15, again repetitive, no encroaching shall be made upon the paved surface of the public Way Grove Street. Number 17, we're gonna strike, which we had in my handwritten note, any contradictions in the plans, and the planning board shall be, plans shall rule. We're going to strike that as we did in the other one. And number 18, antique-style designated sign for the premises similar to that as shown on the plans. That is the same as the other one. That may not be applicable here, because this is the adaptive use, but it is the historic kind of a site, so I left the facility sign in both as well. Sometimes we match all the conditions, and sometimes we just use the ones that are applicable, so it covers everything. And that's it.
So there's one other waiver has to do with light trespass limitations. It's on page four of seven of the major site plan. We have to go back to that document.
This was, I think, for the rear door that automatically goes in.
It's in the layout.
Right.
So any questions or comments on the light trespass?
Mr. Chairman?
Actually, it's the light, not just the energy, but the actual physical thing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the waiver request for the applicant for 4042 Central Street, Fayetteville Hall, for a waiver from zoning 174-12.1K, light trespass illumination specifically for the rear door that is in the street.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. So are there any last call, any questions or comments from the public? Because the next step is to close the public hearings, and then for the board to- Mrs. Luttrell?
I have some, well, first, that the auction house isn't an allowed use, but the board can allow it, but I don't think that we ever formally allowed that use.
So you wanna officially vote to allow it?
Yeah, and then I would, then I would suggest some conditions.
Let's take the vote to allow it. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that for 4042 Central Street, Fayetteville Hall, will we allow the use of an auction house for the premises as requested by the applicant for antique shop and fine art gallery.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Mrs. Luttrell, conditions?
So I would suggest conditioning the auction house consistent with the applicant's description of the use. First, that there are maximum of six auctions a year. Second, that no 18-wheeler truck delivery. Third, delivery only during business hours. And fourth, no outdoor storage facilities or outdoor storage of items.
I'm fine with all but one of those. I'm not gonna limit myself to six auctions. If the business dictates it. That's interfering with my business.
Well, this, this is residential zone. We haven't had an auction house in town before. I don't know how disruptive that will be to the neighborhood. You'd said that you were going to do six auctions a year.
That's my projection, but I'm not gonna be, you're tying my hands. I'm not gonna do that. That's beyond the scope. I'm not gonna do that. That's a nonstarter. Period. That's interfering with the business.
Mimi, can I point out condition number eight of the major site plan approval, where I have the blanks in there for the time, you know, the hours of operation? There is a sentence that says, the applicant owner anticipates approximately six onsite actions per year. It gives kind of a reference to anticipate-
But it might be four auctions, it might be eight.
Right. But we did include something to reference, you know, a ballpark amount.
But what if it's 20?
What if it is?
The facility is being converted to handle auctions, so if there's 20, there's 20.
In the sale of antiques, in a fine arts gallery, it's all part of the original description, if you recall.
I think that's beyond our jurisdiction to limit the use of the building.
That's unfair.
We're limiting the use, but not the number of uses. The number of times that that, that those uses are allowed. I don't think, I don't think that's within our jurisdiction. And John, I thought you said that there may be, like, an antique car occasionally?
That's right.
And you can't, I mean, that has to be put outside.
You can't drive it in the building, correct. There's no way to get it in there. Usually, you know, but we're talking an occasional, if you get in a state, they have an old Mercedes or something, and, you know, and they wanna sell it. That's typically, you know, displayed in the parking lot, like any car would be.
I think, I think that Mrs. Luttrell is concerned about, you know, giant crates of stuff out there, but I, I think that the condition for outside storage-
I have no problem. There's no containers, there's no pods, as you mentioned last time. You were questioning me about pods, I think is the word you use, or that pod-esque things. That's not, people aren't gonna leave their items outside, you know? I'm certainly not. And most, you know, it's, it's not what this is. And, but you need to look at, I mean, this, you know, this is fine, this is art displayed in there, this antiques, this, as I told you, there's various methods of selling these things, by private treaty, by auction, by internet. I mean, that's what, I explained that on the, when I first started, if you recall. You know, I don't wanna be boxed in on my business. It's an antiques, that's what it is.
So like the fountain?
It's way beyond.
The fountain out in front?
Yeah.
What if somebody had a fountain they wanted to auction off? Would you have to bring that in the building?
A lot of times those are sold, large items, like especially large garden items, are typically sold by photograph.
No, no big statues?
No, what happens is they, they'll go to wherever they are now, but they're sold there, you know what I mean? But it's, you go pick them up somewhere else. Rarely, rarely, rarely. A lot, there is a lot of statuary, but that could go inside. You know, not all statuary needs a forklift, you know? I mean, it's, a lot of it's smaller, marble statues and things of that nature that could be used outside in the gardens. You'll see a lot of that as I, with burnettes, when I'm doing that. You'll see what I'm saying. But it's, I think, you know, getting into all that is way beyond the scope.
Comments?
Well, I just think the auction house is not an allowed use. It's not one of the uses.
Well, it is. It says antiques being sold. Antiques are sold in multiple ways.
No, in our bylaw. It says an antique shop.
Well, this, there's gonna be antiques sold there directly by private treaty, that's what that means. And- And, 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 uh, and by auction, and by internet. I mean, that's how antiques are merchandised.
So.
I, I don't wanna be, my hands tied, if, if that's the way it's gonna be, Mr. Chairman, I don't even wanna do it. Just kill it.
So we voted to allow an auction house, antique shop, and fine arts gallery. And then there were three, um, conditions proposed? Four. Are any of the four acceptable to you?
All three, the three I mentioned about outside storage, if you wanna reread them just to make sure I'm clear, but the one about the auctions per year is the, is the one that's the rub. The other three, I think, were fine. Which, which goes to the overall aesthetics and, and.
As long as a car's not considered storage, 'cause I would, you know, wouldn't anticipate you'd see it that way. Joe, you, you make the comment on the microphone, please. You looking it up, Marnie?
In the adaptive reuse bylaw, E three states about storage, anything on the fac- on the site, no storage containers, no outdoor storage.
So that, that's already covered, it wouldn't have to be a condition.
And we're fine with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I mean, there's no issue whatsoever, that's the last thing I'd want out there.
So read the, read the, uh, the four, one of which is a, is a showstopper.
So I'll start with the showstopper, maximum six auctions a year. No eighteen wheeler truck delivery, delivery only during business hours, no outdoor storage facilities or outdoor storage of items. And I could put with the exception of cars.
In the public hearing, we did agree to that, we said there would only be deliveries during the hours and we did indicate that we didn't have eighteen wheelers coming to the site.
Okay, but, and we'll.
And no outside storage.
Right, but the outside storage is already part of the bylaw.
Right, so why does it have to be another?
It doesn't, that's why I'm saying that, that's redundant, we don't need to, we don't need to have that as a condition, 'cause it's already covered. I did, I, I agree, we did cover those other items verbally, so if you wanna put them into, uh, the conditions of the special permit, we'll do that, the, the three that are acceptable.
Well, can I just say the eighteen wheeler, I mean, how can the proponent dictate if someone's dropping something off, how it gets dropped off? If it's an eighteen wheeler, I mean, a FedEx truck, I mean, not, I, I mean, I, I get the intent, but I don't personally think it's fair to the owners that you can't, if someone's gonna drop off something, you gotta tell them in advance.
Well, what happens, that would only be in a case where, where, let's say, for instance, somebody was moving from California to here and they wanted to sell some things in the truck, uh, Mayflower moving van came up and brought three things off that need to go to the auction house. That's, that is a very rare example, but, but I guess a remote possibility, and I appreciate you for bringing it up. The typical van that's used is a straight truck, you know, typical, or these like vans like, look like a plumber's van that would go in and out, that's what most of the dealers use, um, you know, for antiquing, um, you know, a, a panel truck, a box truck or a panel truck, correct. Something similar to like what you see UPS or FedEx driving around typically in neighborhoods. I guess there is that possibility in that, and that would be extremely rare, and, I mean, it'd be extremely rare if that happened.
I, I would agree with Mr. Mills, that we, the town should not get involved in how many wheels there are on a vehicle that drops something off and.
But it, just for the board's comfort level, it may happen, but it would not be something that is ordinary, it would be out of the ordinary that that would take place.
Well, if.
And that would be dictated by the client, that they're having some third party ship something and it happens to be the last two items on the truck, they're not gonna go rent another truck just to stop and, and drop two items off.
But if, if there was a concern of, say, of storage on site in an eighteen wheeler, like, uh, you know, that just got left there, I totally see that, but I think that would be addressed in no outside storage, so I don't see, I mean, I mean, I don't.
I mean, for the record, people aren't gonna leave items, myself, I mean, I, I don't think you have a good grasp of what's being auctioned.
So what are we down to now, two?
Well, there's no store, outside storage, but we already know that's in the bylaw.
That's gone, so that's.
But I don't want you to know that, even if it wasn't, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
All right?
Let's not bring that one up again.
All right. And, and what was the other one? I'm sorry. You had another one there.
Delivery during business hours.
Yes.
That's one, and what's the other one?
No eighteen wheelers.
I don't think we should, I don't, I.
I, I don't think I can say that actually now, I think about it, because.
The town shouldn't get involved in how many wheels there are on a delivery.
It's very unlikely, but it is not impossible.
I don't think it should be in there if, I hope the board supports me on that, we should not be involved in, I mean, the guy's gonna pull over on Central Street and take one tire off, now it's a seventeen wheeler and it's okay? I mean, the town shouldn't get involved in that, it's a goo- it's, it's a good idea, but we, it, adaptive reuse, what, what was the other one? Delivery during business hours.
Which I'm okay with.
It was a limitation on how many.
No, we don't need that one, I don't wanna hear that one again. And?
Dictating to how I run my business, and how often I do.
Okay, so it's, it's one. It's one, business hours. And we're all set with that?
Yes, we are.
Let me ask the board if we can live with that. Mr. Mills? Mrs. Latrell?
I'm comfortable with that, I'm just, the reason why the eighteen wheeler is that it's a residential road, I have no idea how many deliveries and if they start flowing down there all the time, I would think that would be a problem, but I have no problem with just editing my four suggestions down to one.
Mrs. Holian. Okay, so, um, we've, you've agreed to that one condition, and we'll add that into the.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Into the, um, special permit, because that's basically under adaptive reuse. Anything else? Come on, there must be one other thing that can keep us. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing for forty, forty-two Central Street, Fayetteville Hall, special, uh, uh, major site plan approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded to close the public hearing for the major site plan, all in favor? Hearing is closed on that, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for forty, forty-two Central Street, Fayetteville Hall, special permit adaptive reuse of historic buildings.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion to close the public hearing for the special permit? All in favor? Hearing is closed, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the major site plan, uh, request for forty, forty-two Central Street, AKA Fayetteville Hall, with, uh, conditions that were reviewed and edited on September ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded for the, uh, major site plan approval, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special permit for adaptive reuse of historic buildings for forty and forty-two Central Street, AKA forty, uh, Fayetteville Hall, uh, with conditions, um, that were reviewed and agreed upon on September ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion's been made in, in seconded, any discussion? I have a discussion item. This is our first one, and we were, as you, as everyone can tell, we were, we were learning as we went along with this, um, and certainly hoped that the next, that, that, that what we did here through these, the public hearing and our actions will, um, not only not discourage, but hopefully encourage, uh, other adaptive, uh, uses for this, uh, bylaw. We have the rust off us now, we, we've, we've climbed the learning curve and, um, hopefully the board will be, um, a lot better prepared to deal with the next one. And then, um, uh, there was a, a comment relative to delay, and anytime I hear that, you know, it, we have to look at the record and see what was the reason that, that we had to go through these several weeks and months to get to this point. And as you can see, the, the plans evolved, uh, quite a bit from the first, from the opening of the public hearing, uh, to tonight. And at the, at the beginning, uh, we were, we were big picture, uh, we got into some details, but as each hearing went, we got down into more and more finer, uh, details so that the neighborhood, that the proponent, the board, and the public will know exactly what we're getting, and there's, um, there's agreement on that. And it's, it's a process that takes some time. So, uh, and I think we should thank, uh, the proponent for, uh, working with us, thank the board for, um, working our way through this. Any other discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, congratulations, good luck. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a continued public hearing for two East Main Street, major site plan approval, and a continued public hearing for two East Main Street, special permit Village Business District. These hearings were continued from July twenty-second, August fifth, and August twenty-sixth. Well, that's the town planner to give us the latest on this project, proposed project.
Okay, since the last meeting, public hearing for two East Main Street on August twenty-sixth, uh, there was an extension requested at that meeting to, um, for planning board action to be the deadline, uh, September thirtieth. That was granted. In the interim, uh, Mr. Bemis submitted revised plans dated September third, two thousand nineteen. Uh, these were submitted to the town consultant, reviewing consultant Fussin O'Neil, we received, comments back from Fussin O'Neil, which were, uh, sent to the applicant and owner, Peter Bemis, and there were no further, let me check if there were any town comments. There were no additional, uh, comments from the town departments received at this date. And that brings us to this evening, uh, where we have, uh, the revised set of plans, which is submission number four on the screen.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Bemis.
Yes, good evening.
You're on.
Okay, uh, so the, uh, the plan set is revised through nine, three, um, again, you got all site plans and the architectural plans, and then I'll just highlight the changes. There was some discussion about what we had had identified at the toe of stair and the sidewalk, so we explained that further, that there's a sidewalk there and you'll end up with a six inch reveal, and that's how that got addressed with the elevations that were on the detail. And then we also had the temporary, um, uh, stockpiling area here, um, during construction that, that Fussin O'Neil wanted identified. The, uh, the other sheets are. For the plantings, uh, we put natives on all of them, um, so they're all identified by species, Latin, um, common name. Uh, we were set with lighting at the last meeting. The, uh, temporary erosion barrier, uh, for that stockpile is identified on the plan. And then on the architecturals, we identified the materials for the elevations, windows, shingles, and siding, so all those details are, are enumerated on the plans. Uh, we've got a clean bill of health from Fussin O'Neil, there no further comment. Uh, we did submit everything to conservation and they, a memo came through from Melissa, uh, confirming that the Conservation Commission was in agreement with the site plan, uh, because there were a couple of changes that had occurred, since they had already approved the project, they saw them all as minor and improvements to the project. Uh, so I do believe this project's in position for approval, I'm looking forward to getting your favorable reaction on the plan. Uh, I'd like to get going with it, as I said at the last meeting, um, I would like to get a foundation in the ground, uh, and try to bring, uh, a tenant, uh, on board to, uh, to lease the building. So be happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Peter, uh, town planner informed me, uh, last week that you had, uh, addressed the deficiency in the parking in a, by reducing the, uh, measurable square footage of the building. Can you, can you take us through that?
Sure.
And show, show us how that's documented?
Okay, well, it's a, a three, the, the, there's basically a two and a half story building, so on the third floor, uh, we have a walk-up, uh, to the third floor, but the third floor is only gonna consist of, uh, what is it, five hundred and seventy-one square feet of habitable space, uh, the rest of it would just be storage. Um, we thought it was important to have this look of having the dormers and having the gable in the front of the building, so, um, otherwise, you know, the, it's a six thousand square foot building on the, the two floors that's there, so the third floor would really be mostly just storage, 'cause, uh, the board wasn't gonna allow the waiver that I'd asked for on the parking numbers.
So how is it, tell us how it's, um, able to be, uh, inspected and for, for compliance on the plans? Show us how if the building inspector were to perform an inspection, he could verify that there's only six thousand five hundred square feet, five hundred and?
There would be, the buildout of the plan would only be the, that square footage.
But where, where is the storage?
The remainder of the space.
Is it identified as storage?
No. I wasn't trying to define it as storage, I mean, I identified that on the plan and said how much square footage that would be there, so that, that's it.
Right, but I think the board is gonna be interested in identifying which.
I'll, I'll draw a square on there and just say six hundred and fifty-one, that's it, that's all you can have, um, so we recognize that.
So if, if a tenant on the third floor wanted to use the part of the building, the two quadrants facing the tracks.
They wouldn't be able to.
It looks like you've, it looks like you've assigned the storage to the north side of the building? We shouldn't be guessing where the storage is, that's my point.
Okay, all right, well, and I'll, and we don't have a draft decision this evening, so I'll, I'll just mark it right on the plan and just put down six hundred and fifty-one, whatever that number is, I forget, I think it's six hundred and seventy-one square feet, that's what, that's what can be on that floor, and that's it.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills?
Uh, still no comment from the town in terms of parking on the street or anything like that?
Uh, it's been no, no further comment, I mean, again, I'm in, I'm hopeful that the selectmen, uh, would be willing to entertain creating parking opportunities on both East Main and Newton Street. Uh, the plans that I got from, uh, the DPW do show some spaces on East Main, they didn't show any on Newton Street.
And I know, I think it was one le- letter we got, um, last time, the, uh, neighbor wanted to make sure that there was no lighting that went into. sure that there was no lighting that went into her property.
Yep. And we provided a photometric. We have no light trespass. She was concerned about a light across the street. I did observe that light, but I have no control over that.
Parking, I know we still have, I'm sure we're going to hear about water, but you're addressing all your water issues on-site.
Yeah, we've, we have, we do not impact any abutting properties or any other properties. There's, and I've documented that. I've provided you engineering evidence to that effect. Anyone can make a claim, but until they provide engineering to back it up, it's just a claim.
No questions.
Mrs. Latrell?
Okay, you're better on natives, but they aren't all natives. The inkberry, I would recommend a straight species. And the daylilies aren't, are non-native.
I, there was just no other plant that had color. And I, if I said 100%, I didn't mean to say 100%. I kept the daylilies in there. I want to have some color in the front of this building. But every other plant, more than is required by the bylaw, is native. I thought inkberry honestly is. And I picked the one that was listed as a, a native at that Gobotany site that you told me to go to.
So, I'm asking for a straight species. You have a cultivar listed there.
Blame Gobotany because I took it right from the site. The intent was to try to do that, but I, the daylilies, there's no, there's no native daylily unfortunately. Or the ones that are, are, they're wetland applicable. It's not, it's inappropriate for this, this setting. So, I'm going to stick with the ones that I picked for the daylilies. Got what I had there. And actually, I did change it. Supposedly, that's supposed to be one that's, that is a Massachusetts daylily of some sort. I went, I deliberately went to that site you told me to when I picked as many as I could. I did get rid of the, the other, shoot, stelladoras. I got rid of those. And that's the one that was listed at that site. So, honestly, I think, I think I do have 100%, but I'll stand corrected. But I do want to have a daylily at the front of this building, so...
Okay. Move on.
And I added more, actually. I added more plants than we had had before because we had some grasses, and that grass was the one that was listed at that site, so...
Okay. Moving on. So, according to the bylaw, the building should be consistent with other buildings in the area? And I don't see, the other buildings are either stucco, brook or wood, and that's vinyl.
We're doing vinyl for maintenance and longevity of the building, and the vinyl material is going to look just like the cladboard buildings that are on that street. And it does say the surrounding area, if you go up East Main Street or you go up Newton Street, there's new constructions going up there that is vinyl. There's vinyl going on all over town, so...
Well, but right down there, it's inconsistent. And the other thing is that all the buildings around there are between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet, except for the Southborough House, which is 4.7, but it's set back and it's on a much bigger lot. I just think that that building will overwhelm the area. It's huge compared to everything else down there.
I'm doing it in accordance with the zoning bylaw. This is right perfectly in line with what the zoning bylaw asks me to do, tells me to do. It tells me not to have parking in the front yard. The parking is behind the building. It tells me to put it on the lot line. It's on the lot line. It's parallel and perpendicular. I'm doing everything that the bylaw states. And there are, I'll cite the references right out of the zoning bylaw for the record because it does, I don't conflict with the scenic view. The dimensions of this building are approximately parallel. They are intersecting that street. The appearance of the primary wall and roof materials do conform with other buildings in town. The next item is Route 9. We're not on it, so it doesn't apply. The building should make, be not made to be a sign. We originally had some signs on the front of the building. I took them all off, so there's not going to be any signs there. And then there should be some element of consistency with buildings on abutting premises on the same street and consistency with height, wall materials, and window proportions. And this is as colonial as you can get. I think I've met every one of the performance standards for the, for the Village Business District.
So, height, are there other two-and-a-half story buildings?
I could have a three-story building under zoning. It's two-and-a-half.
Well, so, there's consistency with height, but other, the other buildings around there are not two-and-a-half stories?
There are, there are buildings right up the street that are two-and-a-half stories. That's what I'm saying to you. There are, there are buildings. There's a building, if you take the other view and you look up Newton Street, I know Karina's kind of flipping through the pictures there, but if you go up Newton Street, there's a building in the foreground that's two-and-a-half stories. My butter is two-and-a-half stories. All the, almost every building on Newton Street is two-and-a-half stories.
But it does, it says facing the same street. So, the buildings...
You're just picking the exact building across the street from me or on the other side of me. If you go beyond that field...
Well, right in that area.
Yeah, there are two-and-a-half story buildings. The one on the other side of Morrow's Market is a two-and-a-half story building. I'm not inconsistent. This project isn't going to work with, with less square footage here. I was really hopeful you folks would support the waiver, that we could keep the building at the square footage that we started with. But at the last meeting, it was made clear that that waiver wasn't going to get entertained. So, I reduced the square footage of the building. You know, I, if, if the board had a desire to change what happens at this location in downtown, there was a lot of years in between that the zoning could have been adjusted. It hasn't been. I'm following zoning. I'm doing what's, I think, in the best interest. I've got a lot of people approaching me and saying, why are you doing an office building here? We want to see retail. We want to see other things. And you and yourself expressed an interest at the zoning board process in not seeing this go in a certain direction. So, I came back with something that I thought was extremely palatable to everyone involved. I can't do anything different. So, this is the project. At this juncture, this is the project.
Just to be clear, I express, I expressed that a use shouldn't be allowed that is prohibited in the bylaw. That was the only opinion that I expressed.
I did not put forward a use that was prohibited. I put forth a use that was allowed, allowed by right.
All right. I'm not going to get into that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Houlihan?
Thank you. So, thanks for making the accommodations. I'll echo Ms. Latrell's earlier point on the native species. I appreciate your support in trying to do what we've requested, so thank you for that. My only other comment was I did head down. I didn't take the floral shop, so I can't recall what the floral shop is. But I guess the, the same comment is just the spirit of the business district, and, and I appreciate the, I think having something new there would be really aesthetically a good thing. And I think I was just trying to see how this would work. I think our zoning, the minimum setbacks, you've hit all of those. I think my greatest concern is this is a large building, a large facing building on this corner street, and I mentioned it last week. I think I, I know that you believe that this will help slow and stop traffic. I just do worry about the impeding safety with this size of a building at a corner lot. And just in the spirit of trying to keep this, to Ms. Latrell's point, in, I understand it's vinyl, the brick, it seems to be the predominance of what is the spirit of downtown in the business village. Those are my only comments, as I would have loved to have seen something a little bit more adapted to the business district. And then I just do worry about the size of this project on the land. And I, I get it, you meet all the zoning bylaws. We haven't changed them. You've met all the requirements. It's just my own preference. When I took all these pictures, it seemed a little bit from a safety concern.
Peter, how is the building going to be heated?
There's gas there, so it'll be a gas-fired unit.
Will the building have a chimney?
No, I don't see one needing to come out. You just do, you do a power vent, they call it. So, we're no different than most homes. It'd be a high-efficiency power vent unit.
We've noticed that the architectural drawings are not stamped by a registered architect. Is there a reason for that? Or is there a reason why you can't get that?
I could have Ron's office stamp them. I didn't really think it was necessary, honestly.
I think that's what we'd like.
Okay. It's fine.
Open up to the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And our commission has not reviewed these plans yet because we haven't had a meeting. So, I'm going back to our standard recommendation, and I'm going to speak as an individual. We will look at the plans in the future, but, and maybe this will be approved by then, but that's the best we can do. I would say thank you to Peter for trying to incorporate more natives into this plan. I think your intention was good. I think also, I looked up the daylily because I'm like, could I be wrong? And you saw it there. And I think it's hard to know that Gobotany in their maps has the color green for what's native, and then they will also use the color purple for plants that are present in the area and have been naturalized but are non-native. And the color purple, in this case, is not a good thing. But I would say, I'm not going to argue against where you are right now with the board. You know, this is, we understand that this newer push for natives is new and there's a learning curve going along with it. And I recognize your attempt. I think the grasses is great. The dogwood, the inkberry, even though it's a, it's a cultivar, I don't know what the planning board's going to say about that. But I would ask that for the daylily, maybe a little compromise could be made. There's a wonderful native plant called Zizia, Golden Alexander. It's yellow. It's an early spring blooming plant that's really, comes up before most other plants do, and it's very happy. And I think it makes people happy when they see it. It's also a host plant for the swallow-tail butterfly. So, you'd make us happy, you'd make the butterfly happy, and I think you could live with that color of fitting in with your landscape. So, maybe you could add 10 of those in there in addition. That would be a recommendation and a nice friendly compromise. So, thank you.
Steve Morrow, Two Main Street, Southborough, Morrow's Village Cafe. I applaud Peter's effort to do something here at this lot, but I feel, as some of the other members do, it's just too big of a building. It's on that corner. It's going to be a danger visibility-wise. And I had spoken before about the water issues downtown. This particular property has two sides of wetlands on it already, and now you're proposing to put another 700 gallons of water into the ground already where we have groundwater issues down there to begin with. Just some of my, my other issues as far as it goes, the parking spaces, again, he's short on parking spaces. He's asking for a smaller parking space, and he's also short on the amount of parking. I mean, I have some of my customers now that actually park in front of that open lot at lunchtime to come in and have lunch. So, you know, you're going to be adding more cars, and you're going to need more parking downtown. It doesn't do that. I mean, granted, 100 years ago, there might have been a building this size there, but 100 years ago, we had more cows than people in town, too. So, I mean, the whole downtown area is very busy, and I just feel as though it's too big of a building on too small of a lot. Thank you.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Peter, did you want to comment on the, Freddie, what was that?
Golden Alexandria Zizia.
Golden Alexandria Zizia? I'll never be able to say that again.
Yeah, you and me. I, I don't mind. I mean, the...
So, you'll add those?
I don't mind adding those. What, but again, I was trying to do is the, the other plant that I had selected was one that would go during the summertime, which is why I picked it. So, I guess what I would like to ask is if I substitute the one that Freddie wants, which is a spring flowering plant, that I could go back and put the stelladoras back in, which are more effective for a summer color, so I could then have, know that I have color coming at different times of the year, because that's the problem that I had. The only other thing I'd say about the one cultivar I guess I'm picking, this, it's a compacta. Inkberry get big. And that's what I don't want to do, is put something there that's going to outgrow the space that's there. That's why we selected it. And it was on the list, so I picked a variety that's been bred to stay small. And if we're going, if, otherwise, I wouldn't probably put that plant there if I'm going to put a regular inkberry in because it's going to get too big.
Back to Freddie.
The difference between the Stella and the one you chose is just the one you chose is listed on the map because it's been escaped into the wild and it's non-native. So, if you're going to use one or the other, I don't care. The common comment about the Stella, it's been overused, but that's up to you. You know, you go down the street and that's all you see in most of the office parks that have lilies, but you know, I don't have a, if you're, if you're going to use a daylily that's not native, you know, I don't care. You know, we're sort of trying to be cooperative here. I think adding in the, the Golden Alexander would be a nice, sort of a mid-step. But as for the cultivar, you know, there's other shrubs that are naturally not as tall. There's the bush honeysuckle, the native bush honeysuckle. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but, and I'm not going to push either of those, but I'm just going to say, I'll leave that to the planning board. It's a cultivar, it doesn't, it, the straight species is listed on Gobotany. It's when you get that little name afterwards that means it's a cultivar, and we have no evidence that it provides the benefit that we want, why we're asking you to plant natives. Because when they do the cultivation and they breed for certain attributes, it's always for the attributes people want. Short, or pretty flowers, or something different, and they don't consider what the value to the natural environment is when they make the changes, which is why we say straight species. So, you can, in some cases, you know, it's no different than using a non-native. But I leave that to the planning board in your discussion. My commission, like I said, my commission hasn't reviewed it, so...
So, we're at a point where I guess the board and the public don't seem to have any more comments. The town planner has a rough, rough list draft of conditions that I'm going to ask her to go over. The language isn't finished yet. So, we'll go through those conditions, and then we'll open, open it up again for comments on the conditions. And then what I would suggest is if we're pretty comfortable with the, with each of the conditions, then she will formalize them and send them to you and the board and town council, and then have you come back on the 23rd. And, which is, seems like the best timing to have these things happen and then have a vote.
Okay.
So, Karina, can you go over what you have for, for conditions, and maybe we will add or subtract from them?
Okay. These are very rough. What I typically do is go through the Fussin O'Neil comments, the very initial ones, and item by item, I see what's a waiver, a condition, what's met, and it whittles it down to a list, and then what's discussed during the meetings. So, initially, we talked about the parking calc and the confusion with the square footage shown on the plans. So, condition will be... So, condition will be to define the square footage of the building, the office space, and what is being designated as storage. So that it's crystal clear, the parking calcu- what the parking calc relates to for the use and the space. You know what I'm saying, right? So that the storage space-
Yeah, it's very clear.
The architectural plans need to be updated to match what you're proposing. I think you mostly did that, except for that square footage of the storage versus office space. The architectural plans should be stamped by an ar- licensed architect-
Okay.
-because it's Business Village District. I think it's important because that, architectural floor plans and elevations are required as part of the submission. Other times, we ask for architectural plans because the planning board wants an understanding of what the project is. But with Business Village, it's, you know, we, it's a part of the submission. There was a comment in a previous meeting about showing the crawl space in the basement.
I put a note on, but I'll, since I'm gonna have them update the plans anyways, I'll just make up, I'll have them draw, we'll draw that floor plan as well.
Okay. There's still the question from Fussin' O'Neill, comment 10, about the sign, details of it.
We, we showed a sign detail on the detail sheet?
Yeah, let me see. It says here, "Provide sign permitted to town building. Inspector for sign located adjacent to the parking entrance. The sign shall not exceed..." Okay. So I'm not sure if those were, if the sign was detailed enough for the planning board or not.
I mean, we, we identified the square footage and the sign.
So the materials and the size? And there's no lighting on it?
Uh, no, we put a luminaire on it as well.
There is.
Yeah, and that was defined as well. And it was part of that lighting analysis.
Okay. Just in case it got missed.
Okay.
Fussin' O'Neill had a comment, number 11, to provide the turning radius for public safety vehicle. So I need to see that the truck can actually turn-
Yeah, okay, we can do that, right. And the, the sign was on sheet two.
I see it, okay. Again, the landscaping paragraph that relates to native species and those-
Right, so, so while we're on that, though, 'cause, 'cause there's gonna be some that aren't. But again, we're, we're well over the minimum requirement. I mean, extremely well over. Just with the trees alone, I already meet it. And never mind, you know, with some of the other things. So I, I guess there, there will be a couple of items that are probably gonna be non-native. And I will talk to Freddie about that honeysuckle one that she mentioned. If it works, great. I just don't want something that's gonna get too big.
Okay, so the standard landscape paragraph that you saw previously on the decision, where it just says for the life of the use of the stuff-
Oh, I expect that, yes, understood.
At least that. In the application, that when you submitted the application form, you still had the hotel use and office space. So on the condition, in the condition, I wanna just specifically state that the application was for office space.
Understood.
For the whole building. Look right here, hold on, a couple more. There was the waiver for the parking spaces, which will, the size of the spaces, okay?
Building now is office space and storage.
Office space and storage.
I mean, the storage is a accessory to this, the office. But it's not like we're gonna rent this out to someone for storage space. But, you know, the first, the occupants-
The point is, you get to use it as storage.
Yeah, the occupants would have a space to put their storage items, yes.
That's not debated later. It protects both directions.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think then the only other ones would be the very standard ones that you saw in the prior decision. For example... You know, "Except for specific waivers granted, the applicant shall comply with all provisions of the general bylaws and provide any fees imposed generally for construction projects."
Yeah, that's fine. Your, your standard conditions are fine. I expect those.
Yep. The allowed lighting paragraph is gonna be a shown-on-plan and the planning board has one year to review if it's too much, too little. The light fixtures exterior shall be no greater than 3,000 degrees Kelvin or reduced-
Yeah, we specified that, right?
Yeah. Hours of operation, is that on the plan?
Um, I wrote basically, "As regulated in the community." So as you regulate other uses in the town, I just wanna be held to the same standard. I don't want a special standard applied to this building. I have to try to lease it to someone.
Okay. "Prior to lapse of the PUP period, three sets of final plan should be submitted to planning for endorsement. Prior to start of construction, the major site plan approval decision and the Business Village District special permit shall be recorded."
Now, again, the plan size, as long as it's eight and a half by 11, I'm fine with that. 'Cause again, it's not set up as a registry recordable instrument.
After plans are, after, we'll need the AutoCAD files and such. Pre-construction meeting with the planning department, at least 14 days before start of construction, provide construction start date, schedule. Prior to any initi- initiating site disturbing activity, applicant shall provide in writing the name of the person responsible for site disturbing. Prior to construction, copy of the SWIP and a fully executed storm auto ONM plan stamped by a PE registered and must, must be filed with the planning board. I know you have to do it for conservation.
Yeah, we, we, we already have that approved by them. And this, this site's well below the requirements for EPA filing, so I will-
Do you have an ONM plan for the storm auto?
We have an ONM plan, yeah. So I'll provide you with what you need. It's just not gonna be a EPA SWAP. I don't need to do one.
And you didn't do one for conservation?
I did one for conserva- I'll provide you with what I provide of conservation, is what I'm saying.
Right, that's what we need a copy of. "After construction, as built," in that standard language. And maybe, "Conditions shall apply to operator, owner, and all successors."
Understood.
And that's what I have.
So, any other questions or comments, Mrs. Holahan?
Yeah, just a clarifying question. So you said you had interesting, interested parties? And I know you're, you're not at liberty to disclose. But I just, just curious if that, the size of the space, like, is, you know, signed, sealed, delivered, from the size of the building versus speaking to someone who would accommodate less, fewer space? You weren't completely at the perimeter of the, the lot and the setbacks?
Yeah, they wanna be able to grow and they want to be able to grow larger than what's here. So that's the issue for them, is that, you know, is this gonna, this facility gonna work for them? I, I hope it still does. I told them where the square footage was after the last meeting and it didn't become a non-starter. But if, if it was to go down any further, then I think it would be a no-starter. And that, then that becomes a problem for me, because then I don't see a project of this scale and scope working. So therefore, I would go to another alternative use, which I have no choice but to put here, the one that will work and be vi- financially viable.
Yep, that's fair. Thank you.
That's where I'm at. Thank you. So getting back to what Mr. Morrow stated, and I think virtually everyone on the planning board and maybe others who have spoken, all are on the same page as far as thinking that the building is too big. It's the biggest building, or it will be the biggest building in downtown. But somebody's, some, some building, somebody's gotta be the, the biggest. Can't all be the same size. Someone's, someone's gonna be the first one to build a bigger building. And as far as the, not just the size, but the location, you've stated clearly, I think, that it meets the zoning. So I think that the board, even though myself and I believe the others would prefer a much smaller building, one that wouldn't be so, you know, huge in that setting, I think the planning board would be on thin ice legally to deny this or to make a condition for you to shrink the building, since it does meet the zoning. So, I guess, at least from my point of view, voting to approve this is not exactly, you know, 100% happy about that because I, I think that the building, and I think others think that the building is, is a little bit too big for that, that site. But again, it meets the zoning. And for the board to go, go outside of that, I think we would not prevail. Anything else? Mrs. Luttrell?
I, I see it a little differently. I think it doesn't exceed the zoning. But this is a special permit and we have great leeway to make sure that it fits in with the Business Village and with the other buildings in the area and, and fits in the, the feel of the, of the neighborhood. So I, I think we have great leeway under a str- a special permit to make sure that it, it fits. And I think it's too big.
Anyone else? Mr. Morrow?
Steve Morrow, Two Main Street, Morrow's Village Cafe. I have to agree with Ms. Luttrell that it, it doesn't fit. I mean, I've been down in the Business, Business District for over 50 years. And, and all these other buildings are nothing to this size. And I, you do have rights to say this, because it is the Village District. It has special requirements and requires special permits. And it gives you a lot more flexibility in shrinking and making things conform. If you vote this through, you will forever change the Village District in the center of Southborough. So I would encourage you to please vote no. Thank you.
So, the only thing I say about size is that I can put up the historic, you know, photo. I realize the building isn't there, wasn't there in my lifetime. But it was there for a long time. Probably longer than, there's been no building there. There was a building there. Because it went back to the, the turn of the century. And it was certainly there through the 50s. And it took up the whole corner. It went all the way down Newton Street. It went down East Main Street to the railroad tracks. So, it, scale and scope, you know, there's a, there's a site across the street from ours, the Main Street Bank. That, someday that site's gonna get redeveloped. That footprint of that land can support a building a lot larger than this building. I'm sure that, that some future board will have the same commentaries that you're making today, relative to that when it gets redeveloped. 'Cause it, someday it will. The medical center down on Newton Street is a hell of a lot bigger than what's happening here. I don't know what sort of commentary was made then when that went forward. But I don't even know how to venture, I'm guessing how many square feet are down there? Now it goes all over the place. It's just, it just goes on forever. And that's, that's just down the road. And that's right in the middle of residential area. This, you know, this is, this is the zoning. It's the way it was set up. If I put the building to the back end of the site, there would have been all this negative comment about all this parking lot in the front. I mean, it's just, I don't know what else to say or do, other than the fact that I know that I've complied with the process. I put forward a building that will work financially for a tenant that's interested in being here. I hope that they still wanna be here. Because otherwise, I have to go through this whole process all over again for a different use. Because I just don't see a lot of people lining up to wanna have an office building in downtown Southborough. But there is right now. And that's the square footage that I need to go forward with. This is the building program that works. And I need your approval to put it forward. So I, I look forward to your support. I've addressed all of the concerns and the mitigating circumstances that are needed for infrastructure at this location. And the, the project is supported. We have permits from all other departments except for this one. So I look forward to your support for the project. And, and Karina's conditions were fine. Thank you.
Would the board feel, we, we haven't done a Village Business District project in a while. Would the board feel more comfortable? Because what you said, Mrs. Luttrell, is true. It's a special permit and we have broad authority. Would the board feel comfortable if we were to ask for guidance from town council as to what our authority is, specific to the size of the building? Can ask the town planner to put in a legal opinion request? To have him give us some guidance as to what our authority is?
I think that makes sense.
That's what we'll do. We'll ask the town planner to ask for advice from town pla- town council to see relative to the special permit authorities that we have, if the board can go there, as far as the size of the building. But in the meantime, if there's nothing else, then we will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to September 23rd. And with the understanding that these conditions that were covered will be sent out to you, Mr. Bemis, town council, and the board for review. And you'll be free to just have a discussion with the town planner as to the language and, and other things that you may feel. And then, you know, work it out so that when we get to the next meeting, we're right at the, at the goal line as, as far as maybe taking a vote. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we continue the public hearing for Two East Main Street, Major Site Plan Approval, to Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on the 23rd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we continue the public hearing for Two East Main Street, Special Permit Village District. Sorry. Two East Main Street, Special Permit for Village Business District for Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at 7:05 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on the 23rd. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda. Everybody, one or two-minute recess, two minute- Mr. Mills?
A motion for a two-minute recess.
We'll give, any, a second for that?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. That'll allow the next public hearing to set up. All in favor? We'll see you in a couple minutes.
... Residence Hall, a one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight square foot entryway to the main building, forty-six new parking spaces and associated site improvements. The new residence hall will not represent an increase in the population of Saint Mark's School. The site is located in the Residence A District. Copy of the plans and application may be reviewed at the planning office at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours or on the planning board's web page, www.southboroughtown.com/PlanningBoard. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed charges should appear at the time and place designated. Donald Seymour, Chair of Planning Board. And give you an update. Mid-August, August fifteenth, the team architect, Goody Clancy, made a submission to the planning department, which we call submission number one. This submission was filed with the town clerk on August twentieth, once it was reviewed by planning. The submission was given to Fasson O'Neil, who's the town reviewing consultant. Distributed to the planning board, distributed to the town departments. Legal ad was published in the paper on August twenty-ninth and September second of two thousand nineteen. We received comments from the fire department, which were forwarded to Fasson O'Neil, the planning board and the applicant for their review. The engineer of record is Whitman Bingham Associates. And they made a supplemental submission to the initial one after some initial review comments that I made during review of the application. Those were also distributed to the town and the planning board, the departments. We received no additional comments at this time. We did receive the green cards and white mailing receipts last Thursday as required. And there was a huge stack of them. I understand that there were several duplicates, but it was, I suppose, the safe way to go, just so that it's proper in form. On September fifth last Thursday, I believe it was, we received Fasson O'Neil comments in the afternoon, which we forwarded to the applicant this morning. And that brings us to the meeting tonight. I did receive a PowerPoint or a PDF of a presentation that's been handed out to everybody this evening. And we have it for on the screen for presentation as well. And we also received this colored rendering for your desk viewing and easy reference. This also came in very handy when a butters came in to ask about the project. This is the one I pulled out and it was very clear.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We'd like to have someone introduce the team and then expect you to present. And then we'll, because of the lateness of the hour and the size of the project, we'll probably give everyone a chance to ask a couple of questions or comments and then we'll move on from there. So who's going to speak?
I'll start.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. First of all, thank you Chairman Morris, thank you Mr. Mills, Ms. Luttrell and Ms. Coolin for taking the time. And of course, Ms. Quinn and Ms. Battles, thank you for taking the time. We're obviously excited about this project. My name is Rob Cooklevich. I'm the Chief Financial and Operations Officer with Saint Mark's School. Karina and I talk often.
Hold on a second. Check the mic.
Can you hear me now? It sounds like it's working now. Is that better?
Let's start again.
All right, I'll start again.
You can go after the thank you.
I just want to thank you guys. Thank you to the entire board for hearing us today. We're with Saint Mark's School. My name is Rob Cooklevich. I'm the Chief Financial and Operations Officer. We are joined, I'm joined by a team of extremely talented individuals who are here representing this project. This project, and I'll introduce them. This is Susanna Gaspard with Goody Clancy. She's our architect.
Good evening.
This is Brian Melissi with Whitman Bingham, our civil engineer.
This is Andrew Leonard with A.T. Leonard and Associates, who is our landscape architect. This is Sandra Duran, our amazing director of facilities. And this is Lee Solenberger, our amazing project manager, representing the owner during this project. And the rest are amazing as well. But we, this is a project that just, I know that we're late in the evening, but I just wanted to add that we have been working on this for a long time. And it's born out of a master plan that was originally done in two thousand eight and updated in twenty seventeen, or sixteen seventeen, by our board and a committee, an ad hoc master planning committee. That discussion led to the need by the school to design this project and really creating a school under one roof. And I'll go through a couple of quick points. But essentially, we, as a master plan, looked at different areas of campus. And we decided that this, the sighting of this future building where it is now was determined by that master plan. And that's why it's shown on this drawing that you were showing to the butters that came in and had questions. So it's been a long process to arrive at this location, is my point. And that we looked at all kinds of alternatives all over our two-hundred-acre campus. And this was the most logical and the best and ideal location for us. If I could move to slide two, there's a couple bullet points here that we wanted to go through. First of all, this project is really providing a best-in-class living and learning experience for both the residential and day students. As noted in the letter, we're a school that's been here since eighteen sixty-five. We consider ourselves a proud member of the Southborough community. We have three hundred and sixty-five students, seventy-five percent are boarding and twenty-five percent are day. That said, our model is primarily a boarding model. And that is an integral part of our experience for our students and for our community. The second point is that this new dorm, dormitory would provide a clear visitor experience with intuitive arrival and circulation. If you notice on the handout here, there is a plan to really enhance the main entry as you come in as a visitor and provide a small visitor parking space in front of our current chapel. So that you would also know when you stop there that this is the main check-in point in the main building. So our main reception is just to the right inside the main building. And that is oftentimes, so we would, as part of this plan, we would actually be creating a visitor lot there in front of the chapel. And we would have, it would be a more intuitive experience for the visitor to know that this is where they have to go to travel. And that road that continues along adjacent to our current dormitory would become, would stop and it would actually become a pedestrian path. We can explain more about that, but this is, that's the idea for the second bullet point. The third point is that we're optimizing the pedestrian movement and flow between the new building and the remainder of campus. So as Andrew's pointing out, what they've designed is really a circulation that enhances that flow of the students moving throughout the campus. And jumping ahead, it really is eliminating some of the risk that we have with students living on our west campus. So this second to last bullet is enhancing student safety by reducing the number of pedestrian crossings at Route eighty-five. Currently, a west campus is dorms and you know and you've seen, we have a crosswalk there. And so from a life safety standpoint, we find that this is a mission-critical purpose for this dorm and that we're bringing a campus under one roof where the students do not have to travel across a major road to get to and from the dorm, the dining hall, their classes, the library, whatever it may be. So we think that this is a major piece of this. And then finally, universal accessibility. I mean, we, our west campus is not accessible. It's not ADA accessible and not every facet of our campus is. But this is really taking us to a new level in terms of accessibility throughout the campus. And bringing this dormitory here and the sighting that is currently proposed would bring a, bring us to a new level in terms of making sure we are universally accessible for not just our students, but our faculty, staff and all the visitors who arrive. That being said, those are the major points of this project. If I missed anything, I'm sure these, the rest of the team will be able to answer any questions. But we, and I know I can speak on behalf of our head of school who couldn't be here, we're extremely excited about this project. We've been working on this with our architects every two hours, every other Friday for fourteen months, something like that. So
Intensely. Not as intensely as you guys work here.
This is not, it's not as intense, that's true. But it has been something that I just wanted to note that we've spent a lot of time and done a lot of due diligence and careful thought has gone into this. So without any more, I turn it over to Susanna.
Can you just tell us about the other piece? The fill-in?
The remainder? Yes.
Yes, I'm happy to expand on that too. But if you want to.
No, please, go ahead.
So the next few slides in this presentation, and also you have it printed in front of you, let me know if I'm too close to this. I just want to take you through the major architectural moves of this project. What you see on the first site plan is essentially the west campus building spoking in. I will try to point without hitting anybody. But essentially, this is the west campus where right now a great number of students live and they have to cross, as Rob was explaining, across the road to get to classes and essentially cross the road a number of times. So this diagram on the, these pair of diagrams on the right-hand side show you, right now, the current situation is that the majority of the campus activities is in one tight clump. And then this west campus is actually really far away from it. Students really have to plan their days around, you know, what kind of gear they gather and also what kind of safety they will have to face as they are crossing the road. So this project is really bringing everybody into one contiguous location with this new site in this southern extremity of the existing campus. So when we were hired for this project, when we were interviewing for this project about a year ago, we presented a few design schemes for that location. But what we also wanted to point out to the school that they will have a very different way of, you know, the students are going to start to use the campus very differently. And they will start to come to the main building from the east as opposed to from the west where they used to. So we proposed that the school spend some money in providing a new entrance to the main building to accommodate these students coming from the new residence hall. And also at the same time, capture and provide an accessible access to the main building itself. Right now, you have to go through a, you know, very pretty sequence, but it is, there are two, three, four steps at every step of the way. So this essentially will give not only students from the new residence hall an easy access to the main building, but also a really convenient way of, for students who are, who might be on crutches or on wheelchair to get into the building, the main building itself and through that to the library and to the other facilities with the school, within the school. So the next slide, I'm going to just point out these two or three phases of the construction. The school is contemplating taking the next two or three years to go through the sequence of constructions and just taking them on sort of piece by piece, following logic and finances. So on the, in the leftmost box, you see the new parking lot in front of the building that is really shielded by the existing trees and some new planting that Andrew is going to discuss more. It's feeding off of the existing pavement in front of the building and is going to be very much an organic expansion of what is there already. The second box contains what we call the gallery entrance. That's a fairly small addition. It's essentially replacing the existing food service functions that are there already in a small addition. But we are taking that addition down and incorporating and putting in a new one that will replace the office and storage and cold storage in that location and puts in a new stair and elevator in that location. And then, of course, the main project that we are keeping an eye on is this residence hall that I will tell a little bit more about later. So that's essentially, and also the associated landscape incorporates this this whole zone between School Street, the new residence hall, and essentially the entire landscape refreshing and knitting together the entire landscape network around these collection of buildings. So the next slide is essentially a rendering that I'm finding very important from the town's viewpoint. You know, what is this major corner, the signature corner from, from the west corner of, the south corner of our campus is going to look like? You see on the left-hand side, the existing main building. It's a really pretty Tudor-style complex with whimsical roofline and, and very precise, you know, materials and, and dimensions. So we were trying to relate to that in the new building. So we, it is a brick building with essentially a white and brown patterned band at the top that is dipping and rising to relate to the existing building. And trying to also work with the volumes in a way that the building, even though it's a fairly large building, it breaks it down into wings and it has a center. It's a relatively symmetrical location. It, it creates a foreground courtyard where students can, you know, play ball and, and enjoy the weather. It's also a fairly symmetrical composition from the other side. So if you go to the next page and next slide, this is the view from the School Street side where we are proposing a new curb cut to simplify the circulation through the building and extend the parking lot to, to accommodate students and parents dropping up their, their children and other. Faculty parking elements. The center volume is essentially the entrance. And to the left and to the right, you see mostly the bedrooms. And then some of the distinct corners are expressing the study, the academic element that Rob mentioned in this building. So those are study, little study rooms for the students to collaborate in. What you also see here is that there's quite a bit of space between the street and the, the building. It's about 120 feet setback from the street itself. And so there's a fairly gentle rise of the land connecting these two, the street edge and the building from this viewpoint. Quickly jumping to the plans, you start to see here, north is to your left. It was, sorry for that for a second, I was lost. And it's a fairly symmetrical, classical organization. The entrance is in the middle with the most public elements of the building, you know, the building lounge, an associated kitchen to it, and study spaces in the middle, the elevator and the stairs. And then we have 81 bedrooms and 12 faculty apartments arranged within the building to provide, you know, these clusters of 12 students, kind of following the tradition of what St. Mark's has already established in other residence halls within the building. The next page shows you a rendering of the gallery addition. So this is as you were going, if you went through, I can point to that, if you went through, you see? But if you want to do it in person, that's probably a, a little better. Essentially, coming right now from this parking lot, everybody walks up these stairs and goes through Terriott, which is this dorm, kind of in between the stair and, or the street edge and the main building. And from this viewpoint, you would start to see this addition, the gallery entrance, kind of inviting you. Although we were really trying to design this addition so that it wouldn't compete with the, with the main building. We, we, it's an important entrance to the building itself, but it shouldn't take the prominence of what the historic entrance is. So it's mostly, it's the same brick. We are opening, same because the main building, opening up the, the corner to allow students visibility to the stairs and the elevators. But it really is set back and nestled into, into that arm, in between those arms of the existing building.
May want to point out to people what's new.
Oh, yeah, it's hard to tell you. Right, so essentially, this zone here is the new addition. These, this is the, essentially, the food service director's office, gallery, it's a student's space, essentially a student, the extension of the main student gallery in the main building. And then the entrance is down here with stairs leading you up. And you can also take the elevator. So if you go to the next page, that's where the plan explains this a little bit better. Essentially, the existing building is this footprint. And what we are proposing to add is this roughly, was it 350 square foot space of what is replacing partly the food service elements and then adds the, the circulation elements to the main building. So the next page is the landscape plan. And maybe actually what is better, just visibly more inviting is the board that Andrew has brought. So would you like to?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit to the site plan and, and the general placement and connections of, of the building and the spaces. So the, the goal here with the safety note of having students not cross 85 was also having them not have to cross an internal road. So the, the goal, and you'll see all the red are, are brick path systems that are all pedestrian. We basically, our mindset has been to change a road you can walk on to a sidewalk that you can drive on. So that main wide path that goes through is also a fire lane, which is, we have grass pave on each side, which will just be lawn. So it's sort of a low-impact fire lane. That is a sidewalk 99.9% of the time. There are a series of outdoor quad spaces, which is repeating what you see around campus. So you see the building elements come forward and the green spaces kind of sit between them. So we're really repeating that. So really, our goal is that it fits into the overall aesthetic. So if you're driving down 85 and you are used to looking at that type of landscape in front of the old buildings, this, we're, our goal is that the new building serves the same purpose and feel. Those green spaces would be functional because there would be students and, and faculty and staff in them moving back and forth. From a grading standpoint, everything is universally accessible between all the building entrances now. The new building, the existing Terriott, the new East Gallery entrance and the main building, all are now universally accessible. We tried to keep the, the front of campus that green pastoral feel that you saw in the perspective a few moments ago. On the east side, we're, again, trying to continue the, the current, I guess you'd call it aesthetic, of the kind of internal parking of campus being on the east side. And where Rob was talking about clarifying things is right now with the road that goes through campus, people can kind of come through, park anywhere, walk anywhere, drive anywhere. And what we're trying to clarify is to get the in-and-out flow to come in out of the main entrance and have it be very clear, the visitors and drop off. And that type of flow, in-and-out, 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 is out of the main entrance to Marlborough Road. And that, the School Street side is the internal, I'll call that the internal road. Faculty coming in, faculty live in the dorms, faculty who are coming in to teach, parents who are coming to visit, who are part of the school already. They come in, they park, they know where they're going. So there's not so much of the manic, I don't know where I'm going, flow. That's really how the school operates. And that the Marlborough Road is clearly, like, the Google map will send you to, to Marlborough Road and the entrance that kind of comes up to drive now. Along School Street, we're, we're looking at the old tree, along Marlborough Road, sorry, we're looking at the old trees. Currently, St. Mark's is doing some tree maintenance to those. And we're actually even in this, looking at a succession plan for those old trees and starting with this project, starting the next generation of trees that would live along Marlborough Road. Along School Street, a similar mindset is, we're, we're, our intention is to replace the orchard that has slowly faded away and died over there. And our goal is to actually replenish the orchard and reestablish it on the east side of campus, ideally with some connection to the actual food that goes into the dining hall. Low-impact development-wise, we're, and Brian will get into that more. We have some vegetated swales, rain garden. And we've tried hard with that, the sidewalk to get to really reduce, we reduced about eight, eight feet. So of the 20 feet the fire department needs, eight feet of that is now a pervious surface instead of an impervious surface over that entire length. So we're really trying to keep the, the stormwater flows and the, the overall water volumes in check. I heard a lot of talk about native plants earlier today, more than I was expecting to hear, to be honest. But we have a good amount of native species, in particular in our trees. We have a decent amount of strait species in our trees. There's, a lot of where we went with cultivars or non-natives relate to the foundation plantings of the dorms. And those were most specifically for two reasons. One was safety, that we need to keep the plants low and they need to sort of grow that way on their own so people can't get behind them and look in windows because there are bedrooms on the first floor. And the second was to try and time up all the flowering with when school's in session. So for the most part, we tried to time up a lot of the plants and that. But that's something we can always continue to look at through this process as we go along.
Good evening. I'm Brian Melissi with Whitman and Bingham Associates. We have the project civil engineer. I know it's getting late, so I'm going to be fairly brief. We work well with ATL. We've worked with Andrew on a bunch of different projects and to incorporate what he needs is landforms to what we try to do with the stormwater. To back up very quickly, we are connecting into the municipal water system that's already available on campus. There's an existing hydrant to the front of the site or the east of the west. We're providing a new connection and a new hydrant to the west of the building. Sanitary sewer is taken care of. St. Mark's has an onsite wastewater treatment plant that currently takes in all their sanitary sewage. And we are simply connecting into a, by gravity into that system. There is, there is capacity in the system currently. It's obviously owned by St. Mark's School. It's operated by Whitewater Incorporated that does all the O and M on that, on that treatment plant. Stormwater is, as the chairman read, we are also here for a lower-impact development special permit in front of this board. At the same time, we have submitted with the Conservation Commission for a stormwater permit. And I believe they'll be opening up that hearing on Thursday night of this week. But we do have a, a combination of stormwater BMPs that, that we've outlined on the plan and in the calculations that we've submitted that include water quality units, the inlet style. Rather than a deep-sunk cat spacing, we have a couple of inlet-style water quality units. We have a water quality unit as a separator type, more of a, a bigger unit, a separator rather than just an inlet structure. We have a couple of grass swales where we could incorporate those into the landscape and into the, into the stormwater collection. Those feed to a bio-retention area in a certain area. The roadway, the new connection out onto School Street, when you review the plans, you'll see that it's more of a curb right there, yep, it's more of a, a crowned roadway with curbing to collect some of that stormwater so it doesn't just flow on onto School Street in controlled way. And then we also have a couple of subsurface retention, I'm sorry, detention and recharge type of systems. Schools, campus life is kind of going away from any open detention basins. We find that quite a bit lately. And so what we have here is a combination of the recharge chambers that you see, that you guys are probably familiar with, that act as both a detention basin and some recharge. The site is underlaid by sea soils, not very good for recharge. That kind of has a low infiltrative rate, excuse me, but we've kind of provided those calculations and whatnot. As Karina mentioned, we received the first go of review comments from Fussin O'Neill this morning. And certainly, our next step would be to, to address those, provide some more detail, some more calculations, and kind of revise the plans accordingly and get that back into Fussin O'Neill and this board as the process continues. So I know it was really quick. I meant to be. I probably forgot more than I told you. But that's where we're at.
I probably should also add about lighting. Our main focus of lighting the entire site is with post-lights, very similar to the ones you see on campus right now. We're looking at introducing a new fixture that looks the same, but is dark-skY friendly. So the goal is that any of the new fixtures, we're going to try and keep most of the old fixtures kind of behind buildings and so they're not, like, washing light everywhere that the building kind of absorbs those and that the new lights that are kind of out in the open along the main path would be dark-skY friendly and LED. And what you talked about, any retrofit kits too for the existing fixtures.
We might, we might add also that we put a lot of effort.
You need to speak into a microphone.
Lee Solenberger, owner's project manager. We put a lot of effort into minimizing the amount of soil that will have to be shipped off-site, raising the building a little bit, creating some landforms. So right now, we're estimating we're only going to have to ship off about 2,500 cubic yards of, of soil, which is down considerably from the original estimate.
That it for tonight? For tonight? So what we'll do is we'll open it up to the board for initial comments. You know, this is really the first look we've had at it, but it's quite an excellent presentation. So I'll open it up to the board and I see that some of the neighbors here. You must know that the planning board has a long history with St. Mark's over the many projects, the Fine Arts Building, the STEM Building, solar panels, and way before that. So it's always interesting to deal with St. Mark's. We, we understand that this project is covered by the Dover Amendment. We've received some guidance from our town council relative to our authority, the planning board's site plan authority in connection with the Dover Amendment. And so we've been properly advised on that. So open it up to the board and we'll see where that takes us. Mrs. Houlihan?
Hi, thank you for the presentation, very thorough. Really appreciate it. It looks beautiful. So I just had a couple of quick questions, purely out of curiosity. So you said it was a 2008 master plan. Since then, you've acquired some new land right on Main Street. Is that beginning to shape into this larger master plan? Do you continue to work on the master plan?
Yeah, so can I answer that? It's a great question. I think, I think a lot of people are curious about what's going to happen at the life safety parcel. And so we have another committee that's dedicated to determining what that's going to become. And we're looking at options. And so if you're referring to the 2017 land exchange, that is still something that's on the table and we don't have a definitive answer. But I can say that I'm almost certain that it, the, that life safety parcel will not become just a drop-off or some, another egress or access to the campus or to the south side of this new dorm. So the options and ideas that we're looking at are self-contained.
Thank you, thanks for that.
No problem.
You raise, actually, one of my other comments is just a, so seeing this new access coming out to School Street. So again, I understand that's intended to be for faculty and people that may already be entering the school either through Marlborough but, or the back entrance near the cage, as we all come to love locally. So I think that my, my, I guess, concern or worry would be around the impact to the neighborhood on that as you're diverting some of the more known resident or people who know the call, the, the high school to be able to go to the back. I think that would be just a concern is how that might impact local traffic. And that particular four-corner there on Main Street is a little cumbersome now. There's a daycare right in there, as you know. I think the rest, I'll wait to see. I think Fussin O'Neill raised a lot of pertinent things that we would like to have response to before I could make any more comments. But I think those were my only two comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The most important question, will there still be room for Santa Claus to land?
Plenty of room for helicopter landing on the main field, absolutely. No question about it.
Phew. And then, just, I would like to see a lot more native species. And, but, it looks good, and I look forward to moving forward with the process.
Mr. Mills?
Good evening. So, excited about the project. I visited the school with my daughter a few while back, with my son, my oldest son, and not my youngest, but, and having attended private schools too, so I'm going to give you a perspective, both as a student at one time, and also as a parent of kids who go to private schools. So, one, I was the one who made the comment about you need to get somehow temporary access for parents to get, to drop off their kids, because otherwise, they're going to drive their suburban right over the lawn, get as close to the door as possible, and they know you're not going to say anything when you do it. So, unless you're going to have the football players out there, or like bins or something to wheel them in, especially, I mean, that's a long haul for anyone in the northernmost point to get all their stuff in there.
Are you talking about move in and move out?
Yeah.
The actual intention-
Need a microphone?
Yes, sir.
The intention of move in and move out is to actually use the road. So, it's for fire access, the wide sidewalk is actually for move in, move out service and fire. It's all rated for it, and again, we have four feet on each side of it, so if someone drives off the edge, it's actually fire truck rated support on each side of it. So, they would drive basically almost right up to the front door and around the building.
So, still that northernmost western point? How do you get to that?
Through the main entrance, in particular with the safety and security of the building, we don't have access points at those points, that's actually, goody klancy designed the building, so you have to funnel through the center of the building for security. So, they would have to go through the points where we're getting them kind of vehicular access to.
Most of the elevators are in the center of the building, so that's where they'd all be.
But, it's a good, it's a great important point, sorry, I should move closer. It's a great important point that we have talked about quite a bit, is move in, move out, and the chaos of that moment is, been part of our ongoing conversations.
So, and then, day students, where are day students going to park? Is any of that parking for day students?
Currently, from my understanding, no, that most of the day students park actually off the map, off the top of the page, if you're looking at the rendering, on the north side of the building. Keep, yeah, it would be like up in the title block.
Still go through School Street to get there?
No, no, they go through Marlboro Road.
Eighty-five, okay.
Right.
Next to the hockey rink, that would still be on School Street though, right?
No, so there, there's an entrance just next to the Fine Arts Center, just beyond the crosswalk, there's an entrance to the right, it takes you to the student lot that is adjacent to our athletic center and the hockey rink and the swimming pool there. And that's, that's the student lot. So, the student, the student lot for the day students would still remain the same, and they would still be coming in through Marlboro Road, that wouldn't change.
Okay.
So, and what Andrew was talking about is drop off and pick up in the fall and in the spring, and that's it.
Yeah, I get that.
But I, but I see the point about the SUV, and we thought a lot about that too.
The, the other piece, for visitor parking for games, is it going to be not allowed over at this section? I'm trying to reduce the traffic on School Street as much as possible. I know hockey and, you know, people going to the cage.
One of the benefits of this, one of the benefits of the, it's a great point, we'll, we'll probably allow visitors to park in that lot, because we currently do. And one of the benefits of the extended added parking spaces is that currently during some of our biggest events, like Family Weekend, New Student Visit Day last week, we don't have enough parking, and so, if you drove up School Street Wednesday, I believe it was last Wednesday, there, parking is, yeah, exactly, Karina has it, all along School Street, the parents will park primarily starting at the current access into where, to get to the loading dock, and then moving down, so there were probably 10 cars on School Street. So, I think the extent, this extension, yes, we would allow people to park for games, and especially for special events where the campus swells with all those additional vehicles, we're actually going to be pulling, I would argue it increases safety, because we're pulling parked cars off of School Street, which make that a more dangerous situation. So, in terms of the safety, it's mitigating some risks in that respect, so.
So, then, so the 46 parking spots, that's what it counted, right?
Forty-six.
Not including the, not including the handicapped, right?
The 46 new spaces was, was a total, the new parking over by the chapel, as well as the new spaces that are created to the east of the, of the proposed building. And then, there's a couple of spots right to the south, near the building, right over there's a couple of handicap spots there, and that includes those as well.
So, then, those aren't, because those aren't for the 12 dorm parents, is my point.
They could be.
Well, not, I mean, there's 46 spots, it's not going to be 12.
So, we have some additional handicap parking on, at the, do we have additional handicap parking at the top of that lot too?
We do.
Yeah.
Which lot are you talking about?
You want to sit here?
Sure. So, the accessible spaces are just to the south of the building, three spaces there, and then, in the visitor lot up by the chapel, we're replacing the three accessible spaces that were in the road outside of the main entrance, so we're replacing the handicap spaces there. We're accounting for up to two cars for the faculty units.
How many faculty units?
Twelve.
Twelve.
So, about 24 cars are just indoorm faculty of the, of the, so that would be a 24 of the 40 spaces, if you take out the six handicap.
And then, the, the building just to the south on School Street, I believe that's the Vacris's?
Correct.
It is. It is.
And the garage, is that used?
It is. Well, I haven't seen him open it in a while, but he says, I think we have.
Wait a minute, sorry. I just-
It's used.
Yes, it's used by Mr. Vacris and his family.
I'm just curious if, I mean, I haven't seen the sightlines and everything, but if coming out, the new traffic coming out there, if the sightlines might be improved by having a more direct line of sight down School Street when you get out there, maybe relocate that garage.
We can, we can confirm that, that view angle. I know that was one particular note about a tree that is to the north of that, first sightline, to the north of that entrance.
And then, one other thing I know, it's not part of this whole project, just the gazebo in general, or the, the safety building location, it'd be great if that was saved at some point. Just side comment. So, that's all I got for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to go quickly. My family actually has quite a history with St. Mark's. I grew up across the street here, and used to look out the window at the lights at St. Mark's. My youngest brother was the superintendent at the golf course for several years. He worked in the kitchen, worked in the hockey rink. All my brothers and I spent countless hours in the hockey rink and in the gym on Friday So, it's, it's always with pride that I be involved with anything associated with St. When I first saw this plan, must have been about 10 days ago, I just couldn't believe my eyes when I saw a parking lot within a few feet of the chapel. And then, it was further shocked to me when I saw that the two mature trees were cut down where this parking lot is planned to go. I know the way you've explained it, you need, you prefer to have some parking for visitors, but to have this parking lot so close to that historic building, and to look at that portion of the, of the chapel over the roofs of cars, completely changes, is pretty disappointing to see that that's where you plan to park cars.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that, just to give you a sense of how we kind of came up with that? So, would you mind?
No, but I'd rather hear how you plan to revise it.
Or to mitigate it, right? So, where the two trees came down, they were, it was, it was with heavy heart that we had to do that. They had root rot essentially, and they had, basically had no teeth, so every windstorm, they were huge trees that were incredibly dangerous. Now, in order to preserve those trees, we actually contacted an organization called City Bench, and we worked with our arborist, a couple of arborists actually, and cut those trees down in lengths, so that we might be able to utilize them in our dormitories with native, our own lumber. So, that's very exciting, and we hope that we can do that, funding and all considered. The original parking lot was closer to 85, right at the entrance of, the main entrance there, and after we looked at the grades and the trees that are there, we really felt, our arborist, as well as Andrew felt that, and myself, that the impact to the trees would be so significant, that those historical trees would probably be so negatively impacted, that that wonderful idyllic walk and grove would just be gone. They're old and they're mature, so to connect this visitors lot and to make it accessible and to get it close, it seemed the most logical and the least impactful to the trees that are there to side it closer to that circle. Now, to mitigate that, I think we have some perspectives, and I don't know if we brought the perspectives here, maybe on our next visit we can, that shows from the different views, how much you actually see or don't see of the parking lot. And we plan to have a robust planting around it to also shield it and make it less parking lot, because we, of course, cherish the architectural integrity of the chapel, and we don't want to negatively impact that any more than necessary.
I'm not sure how you could impact it anymore. I mean, it looks like it's about five feet from the building, based on a 20-foot, 18-foot parking spot here. But, I made my comment, and thank you for the explanation, but that's one area that the trees are gone, so it's too late for that, but to have the cars parked within a few feet of the, of the side of the building just seems to be something that maybe you can reconsider. Now, on the civil engineering side of it, you mentioned that the campus is 200 acres, and I haven't looked at all of the details, certainly not, but if there's any challenges or benefits or opportunities, we've, in other site plans in the town, especially if the site, if the owner owns more land than the proposed project needs, then the board has been flexible in trading or using other parts of the land to accomplish recharge, you know, stormwater recharge, decreases in flow rates. So, if, if you're being challenged to manage the stormwater in this tight area, but you have other areas on the campus where if you accomplish, let's say, I'll just use an example, 1,000 gallons, and you went somewhere else on the campus where it's, it's less intrusive, easier to build, and more productive, and you get 2,000 gallons, whatever we're talking about, then there's a benefit to the overall environment and the overall system. So, I'm just putting that out there, I'm not sure if you have any challenges, or if by moving just outside of the main area, you can, we can look at it as a, as a bigger part of the, of the project, and it may benefit you and benefit other parts of the, of the tight part of the project. And then, as far as going, going with the lights, I was on the planning board when the faculty buildings were built at the end of the soccer field, the north side of the soccer field, and those pedestrian lights, I think they're about four feet high, three feet high, were installed, and I think at the same time, they, they installed the lights behind the town hall here, leading over to the, the Chode House. And we were just extremely surprised at the, the intensity of the light source. The intent was to light up the sidewalk and, you know, the people using it. Instead, these are very, very bright points of light that can be easily seen from Route 85, again, on the other side of the soccer field, and then the ones leading over to the Chode, the Chode House.
May I make-
And we asked St. Mark's to change them, but they, they didn't, and they're still there today. So, I think we're going to be a lot more interested in safe lighting, soft lighting, yeah, dark sky compliant, but also lighting, accomplishing the lighting without having the light source visible, and certainly not having the light source so intense. Is that the direction you're going in?
Yes, the, the fixtures we're looking at are taller, they're more about 12 feet tall, to get the light above the sidewalk, so it can be directed down, and the, the actual lamp in the fixture is in the top of the fixture, so it may look like it's throwing light, like a traditional lantern wood, but the light's on the top, so it shoots down, and we can get, with this type of model, we can get reflectors that control where the light goes and what its distribution is. So, the beginning of all that thinking is actually on the photometric plan that was submitted. We tried to get better, more equal distribution, so there are less hotspots, to your point about like super bright light shining in people's eyes, so we tried to spread the lights out evenly, so you wouldn't get those big bright hotspots. But, yeah, I agree about the, the throwing light at people's eyes is something we want to avoid.
Points of light, that's what we don't want to see. We don't want to see the light source.
Okay.
Sure you don't either.
Mr. Chairman, as you may or may not know, I've only been here at St. Mark's for about a year, and I have noticed that as well, and we want to say to you that we are in the process of changing them to make them less glaring. I think it's actually one of my staff people who just tends to do that, so I've now finally figured out how that's happening, and we're in the process of correcting it, so we'll work with you on that.
Ten, ten years later.
Yeah, we will get it done. It'll take a minute, but.
Okay, open it up to the public. Anybody, questions or comments? See, we have a couple of neighbors here. Longtime neighbors. Mr. Crucianni?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dick Crucianni for Ted Lane, Southborough. I also own a piece of property at 53 School Street, and I too, I grew up on School Street since 1947, and been very familiar with the school. I'm only here to make sure you guys stay honest and do the project to the best that you can. I don't know if Rob remembers me, I met him at the golf course. Well, it's good to see you again, yeah, and I'm kind of delighted, I wasn't quite sure where 25 Marlboro Road was. I guess that's including the frontage going towards Marlboro Road, and I also noticed that most of the building is on School Street, but the front is Marlboro Road, and we accept that. And what I've heard tonight so far, I have no problem with what's going forward, and I just want to be part of the process and make sure- I just want to be part of the process and make sure this comes out the best for everybody, okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and I'm sure you won't be surprised to hear that our commission will be going over the landscape plan and making some recommendations. And unlike the two prior projects, which were, one was adaptive reuse for historical, and the other one was a downtown village business, this is a more complicated, lots of landscape changes, and may not have some of the same constraints that we did with those other projects. So, I just thought I'd give you a heads up, what we've been asking for in the past is including ground covers, a preference not to have lawn where lawn is not needed. Obviously, you have students who might be playing frisbee or sitting on the lawn, so that is a different consideration. But we've been looking at in areas where you don't need lawn to use native ground covers. And we are not landscape architects or landscapers. We don't design projects, but we're happy to submit resources of the types of plants that can be used. So, that's one area in addition to the trees and shrubs and flowers. So, there's two things. There's what's required for the trees and shrubs for buffers and street frontage, and those are required plantings. But we have looked at it and recommended that any soil disturbance be replanted in native unless there is a, you know, a significant reason, like so for the lawn, for example. Is it an area where people are going to be using it as a lawn, and that's needed? If not, can you look at it as a ground cover? And I don't want to be extensive here, it's late, but I just thought I'd give you that heads up, that we look at it even more intensively than what you heard in the very long discussions earlier, and hopefully we can work together. What we believe is this is a new area we're moving into. It's not just us, but, and we, another time can tell you why we're so focused on the natives, but there are many native plants that do the same things that the automatic go-to landscape plants that you know and are familiar with. It's just a matter of not knowing, and we actually have been working with at least one major nursery that supplies native straight species plants, and they're a pretty large Bigelow's Nursery. We don't tell you to buy from them, but we know that if it's available there, that it's not something you can say, "Well, it's not available in the trade." And they do major wholesale, as well as there's New England wetland plants and, you know, other places as well. So, just wanted to sort of set you down that thought pattern. Thank you.
Anyone else? Back to the orchard. On the plan here, L one point zero zero, are those all new apple trees along School Street?
The current intention is yes, that there'd be a mix of new apple trees along School Street that would relate to, and they might actually, we haven't fully discussed it with the dining program, but they might include some stone fruits and other fruits that would relate to the dining program.
What I would suggest, you know, the board through site plan wants to understand what they're voting to approve. So, if it's shown on the plan, we expect it to be built. If it's not shown on the plan, then we don't expect it to be built. So, if you're showing new plantings and you want them to be part of this project, then you should identify them. If there's other plantings or other things, like for example, the lights that you mentioned that aren't part of the project, but it's part of a future project or a plan, but you want to show it on the plan, but you should identify it as not part of what you're asking the planning board to approve. So, it's clear what we're approving. Anything else? Anyone else? Five minutes of eleven. So, what we'll do, we have, the site plan approval period is sixty days, and that goes to October nineteenth. And the special permit for the lower impact development is ninety days, and that goes to November eighteenth. So, we're well within the approval period. This is our first public hearing on this. So, if, did you want to come back at our next meeting on the September twenty-third?
I mean, if we have enough time to do that, I mean, there's-
After that, our next meeting after September twenty-third is October twenty-first.
Because of the holiday, right?
Yeah. Columbus Day.
Yeah, no, I just-
That's why there's four weeks, because we have the Columbus Day in the middle there. So, it's your choice. You're welcome to come back on the September twenty-third, or we can have you in October.
I mean, we got the letter today. We'll be putting all that information together, so it'd be great to save a spot on September twenty-third. We can come in with the letter, with the revised plans, on all that information, and just keep moving forward. So, I don't want to keep you till eleven, eleven or eleven-thirty on the twenty-third, but that'd be great if you guys could give us a spot.
Okay. We just remember that the materials-
Right, that's what, well, that's what-
Should be, should be in the planner's office seven days before our next meeting. We tend to have people that bring it in on Friday before the Monday meeting, and there's no time, there's no time to look at them. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for twenty-five Marlboro Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, major site plan approval to September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, at seven, ten p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for twenty-five Marlboro Road, St. Mark's Dormitory, Lower Impact Development for Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, at seven fifteen p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing then all in favor? Okay, we'll see you on the twenty-third, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion item, Isabella Estates subdivision covenant extension. I'll ask the town planner to give us the background on this item.
get an extension to the covenant that was originally prepared for Isabella Estates. And that covenant was dated, what's the date here? October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. So, he ran the two-year covenant to the, two thousand and seventeen, and that was approved and recorded, the covenant extension. So, Jack is asking for another two-year extension for the covenant to complete construction work for Isabella. I've been to the site. Fasen O'Neil's been doing inspections, not recently, but when it was active, the infrastructure's in, stormwater's in, the roadway is base paved, right?
Correct.
Curbing.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, just no building construction yet.
No building construction.
So-
Trees, some of the trees are in, a good amount of the trees are in.
Yeah.
Grass along the sides. Stormwater's done. Can you read the, what we voted on in two thousand and seventeen? There's language in there that opens the door for the board to take the requested action.
The covenant.
Yep.
Yes, on the covenant, which I just had here, item number five, you see it right here, of the original covenant indicated that said construction installation, if any, shall be completed within two years of the date of execution of this covenant, upon failure to so complete said construction and installation unless the same time for the performance thereof is extended by vote of the planning board, which shall be recorded. The board shall have the right to rescind its approval of the defendant's subdivision plan or take other steps provided by law.
So, the unless leaves the door open for the board to extend it. So, I, Karina and I had this discussion last week as to whether or not we had the authority to do it, which we do, and it's further strengthened by the language that we put in the covenant back in two thousand and seventeen. So, it's up to the board, if we can ask questions and make comments, but it's up to the board to grant this, and I believe that because of what we did in two thousand and seventeen, that we're fully able to do, to do what's being requested. Mr. Mills. No comment. Mrs. Luttrell.
So, is it the expectation that this is the last extension?
I would hope so. Is there a plan for starting to build buildings, Jack?
Well, I've, we've got the last house on Leeds going, so that one should be completed. We're over fifty percent with the Cane's Crossing. So, to answer your question, I would think that we would be building houses probably in the spring up there.
Next spring.
Next spring.
Mr. Mills.
I make a motion, we, we granting, grant the extension? Oh, you want to read this whole thing?
You kind of have to tweak it.
You want to read the whole thing? Make a motion, we grant the extension requested for Ela- Isabella?
Isla.
Isabella Estates subdivision by Bartley Builders.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good.
I'm staying.
Three, zero, one.
I just want to point out that the planning board members can sign this this evening. We checked with the town clerk, and that if Don comes in in the next few days, he'll, they will notarize it for Don's signature, the way we wrote it here, saying that he saw you guys sign it, and then he'll sign the bottom.
I signed this also, though.
Yeah, you sign. So, each member signs here who voted this evening, and then tomorrow or the next day, Don can come in and they'll notarize it downstairs at the town clerk's. As opposed to having a notary here, which is not always easy.
Next item on the agenda-
You're welcome.
Is open space monitoring report. We have it on our table here. Go ahead, Karina.
Oh, it is on the agenda for this evening, however, there was a little bit of difficulty with the consultant getting here. He's coming in from New Hampshire, and he had some, the battery died on his car, so he called me this afternoon noon, and I told him we could push it to the next meeting. Also, Jesse will be here as well, so he won't miss that. I'm sorry, I just found out this afternoon, Freddie.
So, we'll move on to the next item, which is the lighting bylaw subcommittee.
At the last planning board meeting-
At the last planning board meeting, we were talking, we, Dustin Heilman, who drafted the bylaw, the proposed update to the lighting bylaw, was here, and the planning board had suggested that a lighting subcommittee, a lighting bylaw sub can maybe be established. And I just had one question. Dustin Heilman, Marnie, Houlihan, and I worked on a charge, but I want the planning board to understand that if you have a new subcommittee, it involves agendas and meeting minutes, et cetera, and perhaps maybe a working group could be more flexible in working with different departments as opposed to an actual establishment of a subcommittee.
You want a motion for that?
Well, you guys have to decide if you're on board with that, that's all, and then yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we establish the lighting bylaw sub-
Well, we want a working-
Working group.
Second for discussion.
Mrs. Luttrell.
Do we need to establish anything, or do we just ask Marnie to work on the lighting bylaw, and, you know, she can talk to you or Dustin or whoever?
It doesn't have to be, yeah, I don't think it has to be established. And it's not to skirt anything, it's just, we can work faster and with other departments and get feedback, and then present it to the board where it's actually discussed.
Right.
In public.
In public, yeah, because we have to do research and follow up and all that.
So, I think I would agree with the way in which you have presented, so we don't really need to establish anything.
And the town clerk is okay with us creating a working group?
I will confirm that. I spoke with, well, my assistant Casey spoke with them, so I'll have to just confer with her and see if there's an issue. I'll confirm it. I don't think there is, but-
Just a quick question. So, did we just say we don't really need to establish a working group? So, I don't think we need to check in on that. I think if we're fine, that I can work with Dustin and Karina, and we just kind of move forward to be able to present this board with a revised bylaw, I think I'm very comfortable with that. I don't even know if we need to check with town clerk.
It sounds like it's similar to the way we did the Tree City, where Karina and I worked on it, and then developed with some, a little bit of outside help, the draft bylaw, and then presented it to town council, and it went forward. But it was basically just one person from the board dealing with, working with the town planner and outside experts. Okay.
Yeah, that's exactly how it was, like that.
Yeah, okay.
So, I withdraw my motion.
Next item on the agenda, master plan update.
We haven't met since the last meeting. We haven't met since the last meeting. We're meeting on the eighteenth, a week from Wednesday. MAPC is going to be in attendance, and we have a new appointee from the Recreation Commission, Dave Candela. I think that's all I got.
Yes, the planning, the Recreation Commission voted to recommend a new representative to the master plan committee because they, the prior member, David Nixon, resigned from this position. So, I have here a draft notice if you want to appoint Mr. David Candela from the Recreation Commission.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we appoint David Candela to the- We appoint David Candela to the master plan committee representing the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Just thank you to David.
All in favor? Four to zero. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. Well, planner's report. Thank you.
As you may be aware, my relatively new assistant Casey has accepted a position in New Hampshire next to her hometown. So in addition to a much shorter commute, she was offered financial opportunity, professional opportunity. She doesn't have to move to Massachusetts. I'm sorry to see her go. She was a great fit. I'm hoping to find somebody very similar. And I'm going to focus the advertisement on, and I'm working with Vanessa Hale already, that there's planning, you know, bachelor's degree in planning. Because we do ask for a planning, I mean, a bachelor's degree, but I want to emphasize the planning part of it. And I think we'll get another good fit. I'm optimistic. Okay.
Andrew.
Make a motion.
Oh, just real quick. I just want to get, there's just a couple of things you have to know. There was open meeting law training on the 5th that town council provided. Kate attended, as well as Melissa Danza, the conservation agent. So if you have any questions about that, we can get debriefed from them and I'll get an update. Town council has permitting board training scheduled for the planning board on September 14th. I have feedback from Andy that he's available. Mimi is available and Marnie is available. I just...
For what?
For the permitting board training with Aldo on...
I guess I couldn't make any of them.
Oh, I thought you said you could make all. Oh, you can't make any. I read you could make all of them. Sorry. Okay, you cannot.
What time on the 14th?
It's 9:00 a.m. That's a Saturday. 9:00 a.m. here at the meeting room. So I'm sorry, I didn't... Okay, so no for you. So Don, if you let me know tomorrow and I'll check with Jesse, then I can follow up with Aldo. And if you had any specific questions or topics you wanted him to cover, if you email, just pop me an email tomorrow, I'll forward it to him. If you're comfortable, you can forward it to him directly. I would imagine if you have his email. But I can put them all together. On September 20th, here at the townhouse, there's an active shooter training workshop from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. So the townhouse will be closed. So if you want to participate and see what's going on, be here at 8:00. That's September 20th. Park Central is in Conservation Commission continued hearings on this Thursday. So that's moving forward. Public safety update. Police department moved in on the 3rd. Fire department, I believe, moved in on September 4th. They're operating as a public safety building as of September 5th, I believe. And don't forget the ribbon cutting on October 26th. Golf course update. They started construction at the golf course for the ninth green. Is that what it is? Yeah. On September 3rd, so you know that. We're working on getting, yes?
Cruz, can you give us more details on the tees and the how the deck is going to be? And when?
Yes, Dick Croceani again for Ted Lane. Currently, what's going on, we have installed a ninth green and the first two tees that are going down in the first hole. And I would say probably 90% of it's all sorted and ready to go. The company had an obligation and they pulled out. So they work Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, but they're returning tomorrow to finish the sorting on that. We are building a new ladies tee on nine. And we're redoing the middle tee that really wasn't much of a tee. So we kind of build it just a little bigger and putting some new sod on it. Currently, we're kind of waiting for public safety. At least the building, they're supposed to overseed the new fairway. And I don't know where that stands currently. But we're waiting because the grass season is going by. And the sooner they get the seed in, the better. And it'll be just a matter to grow it and we'll be in business. Probably won't be able to use much of it till next spring. But if we can get the grass going, maybe the fairway in November, if we can. Okay?
And the deck?
Okay. Well, Asabet is currently there and they have all their staging up. They haven't done too much but put staging up. And the what's going to happen is going to be a new front deck, new siding, and a new roof is going to be put on by them. And my understanding is they have such a big class, they have three crews. So we're going to have a crew for the deck, crew for the siding, and a crew for the roof. Okay? And, you know, they're pretty well set up to go. I just haven't seen too much done other than making these safety issues to get ready to do it. Okay? So we've got high hopes, high expectations. I think things are really beginning to work out. I hope that everything will get done this fall and we can open up next spring and have our full-fledged golf course that we had. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. And great credit to you and your team there, Cruz, that got us to this point. It was...
There's a lot of people involved, Donnie. It's been a long process, but I can't thank all the boards and even the people of town itself for the support that we were shown and given the opportunity. We had our problems. We got out of budget. We now have gotten back in to the budget. And hopefully, everything's going to come out good. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to Karina.
I've been talking with St. Mark's, Mark Purple, regarding the gazebo that's at the prior public safety property. So I'm looking to get a little bit of history on that. If anybody has information, you can email me on that, trying to come up with ideas of where they could move it to if it's not that expensive or work out a plan with the town. But that's also part of Board of Selectmen's purview. But so I'm in touch with Mark Purple and he knows we're inquiring about this as well. Last thing, I asked town council for a legal opinion regarding the site plan review committee and the potential conflict of non-residents voting on that committee. It was brought to my attention, I think I think it was the Building Commission. I was speaking with her today. And she indicated that the code section, I think it's 9-23, that references you, non-residents can't vote. It has to do with appointed boards and committees. And so she asked me, is the site plan review committee, are those members appointed? And I wasn't really clear on answering her that. But I did let her know that there was this legal opinion request in. And once I got the feedback, we could talk more about it, see if what Aldo appoints. So that's in the works and we're waiting to hear back. And that's what I have.
Mr. Mills?
Motion to accept the minutes from Monday, August 26th, 2019, as written.
Second for discussion.
Discussion.
Could we postpone it? I haven't had a chance to read them yet.
Put it on the next agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? We're adjourned.